Order, February 2nd, 2021, for E-Web Board Meeting. And maybe we can do a slow agenda check where people can talk slowly and John will have a chance to join in. So we're going to start off with Agenda Check. Anybody have anything regarding the agenda?
President Schlossberg, I just wanted to call to people's attention that we have combined the agenda item related to the Lieberg and Walterville project. We were originally going to do that as one technical item and then an economic item, and we've combined those. So we'll have a combined presentation followed by a more lengthy discussion. That's Item 7 on the Agenda Check. But we corrected or made that modification today, but just wanted to make Commissioners aware of that change.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to number two items from Board members and General Manager. Sonia, we'll start with you.
Wonderful. Well, this last month, I attended the ElCog Regular Board Meeting and was elected back to the Executive Board of ElCog, so I'll continue representing E-Web on both of those subboards there. And we also, I really wanted to thank staff and the community members and all of our partners that put together the tour that we went to upriver. I know that there was a wonderful article about it in the Register Guard. It was so helpful to actually see the restoration work and see the vote that we took last year to help make sure that the riverbanks were secured. That seemed to be a good use of the money, and I really appreciate that the citizens that were up there let us come onto their property and actually see the work firsthand and tell us about their experience. And I hope that that does help others to feel comfortable in working with all of those partners that are so committed to that process, because it really seems to be a good value for the community. So thank you, everyone who put that together.
John Barofsky, I guess we need a way to differentiate you, but you're up.
Thank you. Just want to echo what Sonia said about the upriver trip. It was very informative, and I'm excited to continue whatever we can to do to help out our watershed upriver. I was appointed to the McKenzie, or I volunteered to do that. I think I'm going to audit that for a while and let the staff person that has been manning that take that over. Keep his position for now, and I'll start auditing that. And then when I feel comfortable, maybe step into a role as far as the E-Web liaison. But as of right now, I think I'll let the people who know more about it take care of it until I'm up to speed. But again, thank you to everybody for the upriver tour.
Great, thank you. Matt?
Thanks. Yeah, I'll just echo the appreciation for staff and partners who provided us the tour last week. It was very helpful. That's all I have, thanks.
The only thing I have is, just like everybody else, to thank the staff for arranging that tour. I know that it takes quite a bit of staff time, and you're all very busy and have a lot to do, but I find it to be really, really helpful, and I think that it helps us as a board move things along in a more comprehensive and more comprehensive manner. So I think that it is definitely time well spent, and I really appreciate it. So thank you for that. John Brown, are you here? No, not yet. Okay, Frank?
Thank you, President Schlossberg. I just had a couple of updates. I do appreciate the tour as well. I thought that gave us some good insight into what's going on up the McKenzie as far as watershed recovery. I did testify at the public hearing for the City of Eugene on behalf of E-Web on January 19th. This was the hearing related to changes in the city code that impact how surplus real estate from E-Web and that process. This was consistent with the direction that you provided. It looks like it's consistent with what city staff had presented to the city council, and so I echoed our support of that process so far. I also wanted to provide the board with a little bit of a brief COVID update and how COVID is affecting our operations. We saw very slight lower demand this last month. On the electric side in particular, most of the demand being light had to do with warmer weather conditions. We track the number of, and can exclude for heating, and so it was pretty close to budget overall, just slightly down from a consumption perspective. We are seeing a slight tick up when it comes to our, what we call our DSSO. Those are disconnect service orders. Not all those result in disconnects. Those are slightly above pre-COVID levels. As I reported last month, they had dipped down to really pre-COVID levels. They've ticked up a little bit this last month. Some of that is likely because we see increases in demand, and so some of our aging numbers and accounts receivables and disconnect orders slightly go up because of an increase in demand, but not nearly what it was last late spring and summer, which was many times greater than it is now. And as of yesterday, we did fill all of our customer care reservations yesterday, which is about 600 since it was the beginning of the month. And so just wanted to provide those updates to the board, and thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you. All right, so we're a little bit early for public input, and is everybody waiting right now in the lobby? Or is everybody admitted for public input?
We had one person who hasn't called in yet, and I haven't heard from John Brown either, but we do have eight, including those that will be read by Joe Harwood, so we could go ahead and get started, and hopefully the last will join.
Great, okay. So, all right, so we're going to move on to public input. When your name is called, remember to unmute your call. Press *6 if you're calling from a landline, or simply use the unmute button if you're calling from your cell phone. Please state your name and optionally your address or ward, and speak clearly into the phone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present your testimony. Please keep track of time. We have a timer that I will look at and let you know when it's getting close, and you'll hear an audio notification when three minutes has elapsed. After all testimony is heard, each Commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy, we do not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a Commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the Board does not provide an answer, an E-Web staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. The public testimony period for this meeting is now open. So first up, we have Jim New, followed by Joe Moll, and then followed by Rebecca White. Jim, you are up.
Very good, thank you. Board of Commissioners, thank you. My name is Jim New, Ward 7. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. As devastating as the Holiday Farm Fire was to the affected communities, fire is necessary in rejuvenating the forest if it burned, if given the time to naturally heal. Unfortunately, this is not happening in the McKenzie watershed. The E-Web Drinking Water Source Protection Plan states, and I quote, "As a result of the Holiday Farm Fire, salvage logging in the McKenzie will eclipse all previous harvest levels." Seventy percent of the Holiday Farm Fire was burned on private timberland, and there's currently a clear-cut frenzy happening in the watershed by these private timber companies and BLM. Salvage logging is a timber industry term coined to convince the public that nothing of value is left of a burned forest. This is far from the truth. Post-fire logging is encompassing more acres than allowed in non-burned areas, which causes more sediment in the water and increased risk of landslide. These clear cuts reduce the soil's ability to retain moisture for 15 to 20 years due to loss of canopy. It reduces evapotranspiration and increases early snowmelt, which prematurely depletes water quantity in the watershed. If left standing, these burned trees sequester carbon, reducing the effects of climate change, which is being attributed to the cause of this fire. Oregon's forests play a larger role in meeting its greenhouse gas targets than the US forests have in meeting the nation's targets, according to Professor Bev Law from an OSU report. There has to be an ongoing discussion of forest fire policy, forest health restoration treatment with increased forest carbon storage, and how they all align with the McKenzie watershed protection. The future of our watershed is hanging in the balance and is being jeopardized with each acre harvested. I urge E-Web to work with landowners, explore legal regulatory agreements and land acquisitions, or provide incentives for watershed-wise forest management. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, next up, we have Joe Moll, followed by Rebecca White.
Good evening, President Schlossberg, Board members. My name's Joe Moll. I'm the Executive Director of McKenzie River Trust, 120 Shelton-McMurphy Boulevard. Once again, thank E-Web staff for continuing to be a backbone for the recovery collaborative efforts in the valley. It's working. People are coming together to attend to the near-term and longer-term needs. That backbone that E-Web is providing lends a confidence that will be increasingly important, given the marathon that this is going to be in terms of reimagining and restoring and rebuilding the McKenzie Valley. I don't know about you, but I've spent a couple days learning a little bit and watching GameStop and all of the speculative investment that's going on out there, and it has made me think a little bit about the difference between the normal C corporations, whose declared purpose is typically financial profit that drives shareholder returns, versus a B corp or a public benefit corporation, whose bylaws call out the public benefit that must be generated as well. Now, E-Web is a public utility, born the City of Eugene Charter and often attentive to citizens as ratepayers. In contrast to the speculative investments in things like GameStop, E-Web has a history more like a public benefit corporation. Very specific products, the provision of water and electricity, all for public good. But they are still products, and I've often heard board concern in the past about the cost that I, as a ratepayer, must pay you, or the impact of utility decisions on bond ratings and other costs of borrowing. I think we continue to see that ratepayer and broad public support for investment in the production of those products, water and electricity, or just more largely the watershed, is strong, and I hope that you are not too concerned about what currently aren't even proposed as increased costs going forward from a ratepayer perspective, because there's support there. Tonight, you have another iteration of proposed investments in the watershed, in that production facility, that product, and you're talking both about electricity and that other product, water. And I have, as in the past, I encourage you to dial up the investments being proposed. You'll note that McKenzie River Trust is described as a matching partner for some of the funding proposed for the land acquisitions portion. I'm happy to say that we have already secured pledges for more than 10% of that initial match for land acquisition projects. People see the opportunity and want to help. I'm confident that we'll be able to continue to see strong support for the kind of work proposed, and I look forward to working with E-Web staff and many other partners on these investments. Thanks for your consideration of these opportunities. GameStop and other market investors have suffered a tremendous amount of nausea over the last few days of speculation. We don't want that in our watershed. The work ahead of us on the McKenzie needs to be deliberate and measured, and again, the backbone played by E-Web is central. Thank you again for your service on a board that is a model for what a B corp deliberation should be.
Thank you. I'd just like to announce that Commissioner Brown has joined the meeting, so welcome, John.
Well, thank you.
All right, so next up, we have Rebecca White, followed by Madeline Cohen.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, Anne, is it possible to, there, start the timer? Great, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca White. I live in Ward 1, and I am here tonight on behalf of Cascadia Wildlands and Willamette Riverkeeper. I've been a resident of Eugene for several years, but I grew up in Fort Worth, Texas, where the tap water is just terrible. It tastes a lot like a dirty swimming pool. I grew up before the era of bottled or filtered water, so I just thought I hated water, and I never drank it as a child. Twenty years later, I took a job in Monterey, California, often notorious for poor drinking water quality. When I made the decision to move to Eugene, I was training my replacement, a young attorney who just happened to have gone to U of O and had a law practice in Eugene. I told him, "Welcome to Monterey, we're trading places," and I asked him, "What do you miss most about Eugene?" Well, he said, "The local food scene is great, and the Saturday market is a lot of fun, but what I really miss about Eugene is the water." I said, "Oh yeah, you mean like a certain lake or the river or something?" And he says, "No, I mean the tap water." So here's a guy who grew up in San Francisco, which as you probably know, pipes its water directly from the middle of Yosemite National Park. It's pure Sierra snowmelt and some of the best water in the world. But this guy says, "No, Eugene has the most delicious tap water I have ever tasted." All that to say, we are incredibly lucky people to have this jewel of a water system here, and we can't thank you enough for taking such good care of this world-class resource through the years. I'm now an attorney with Cascadia Wildlands, a local conservation organization, and we've been hearing a lot from concerned residents about the massive rate of post-fire clearcutting happening in the McKenzie watershed. They're worried about impacts to our water supply, and that's why we are particularly concerned about proposals from the Bureau of Land Management to log over 1,500 acres in the watershed. This logging will impact both the McKenzie and Mohawk physaled watersheds north of Lieberg and Vida, as well as southeast of Vida. We know the logging is planned for steep slopes of both Finn Creek, Indian Creek, and Hatchery Creek, among others. We know that post-fire logging usually adds sedimentation impacts and toxic materials above and beyond those that result from the fire itself. We just wanted to double-check that E-Web is aware of this plan and to let you know that the BLM is doing scoping for this project now, and would likely appreciate E-Web's input on ways to mitigate the harmful impacts of this project on our water supply. Again, I want to say thank you for your stewardship of our water resource. And unlike the disgusting Texas tap water I grew up with, I am proud to say that my daughter, who is growing up in Eugene, drinks multiple glasses of clean and healthy tap water every day and loves it. Let us know how we can support your work to continue to provide this exceptional resource for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Madeline Cohen, followed by Stephen Anderson. And hang on one second if we can reset the clock again. All right, you're up.
President Schlossberg, I think we'll need to go ahead and skip ahead to Mr. Anderson. I don't see Madeline on the call yet.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, Mr. Anderson, you are up. Are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I would, I'm another one wanting to thank staff, especially Janine and Karen Kelly, who took the time to make a walkabout with us. I was the only one that could make it, but we now understand that we were talking past each other within, as far as tank locations are concerned, and part of it is, there's a lot of stakes missing. I think the neighborhood kids got after things, but anyway, I think they realize now that we're not talking about putting a tank out in the meadow. We want Tank 1 on Site 2, which was staked out down in the saddle of the ridge on the very top. I also appreciated Commissioner Matt McCray responding to me, and I appreciate that he's planning a field trip with staff or Commissioners. The only thing I would say is, and we have people every day inquiring that would like to see the tank locations, well, I can take them out there, or Jim, or some of the other people can, but we don't have the actual stakes anymore for Tank 2. As I say, they're missing. We can flag it, we can show them the boundaries, but I think before the Commissioners do a walk there, it'd be really useful to have the Tank 2 boundaries at least roughly mapped in so you can actually see it on the ground, because I believe what staff thought was we were thinking of a tank down in the meadow, and the Tank 2 site that was originally staked out only goes down in the meadow maybe 30 feet, and so it doesn't impact the meadow really at all. So anyway, that's it. I appreciate you doing well and to work with us on this. And just on another note, Beaver restoration is going to be huge across the world, and it's especially critical now, and I imagine most people have no idea what I'm talking about, but beginning in 1820 to about 1840, Hudson Bay trapped all the beaver in the Northwest, deliberately creating a beaver desert so there would be no way for Americans to settle the country. Well, it didn't work except in this way. We're without beaver, basically, and they are the key to restoring watersheds and keeping them intact. So we need to get them going again. A great book, if you want to find out what's happening in the vanguard of beaver restoration, is called Eager by Ben Goldfarb. I highly recommend Commissioners read it. You'll be amazed at what we're missing out if we don't get beaver back into our watersheds. Thank you. Oh, and just so you know, I'm talking about the tanks on Patterson Hill, East 40th.
Yeah.
So I forgot to mention that.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
All right, we will have some public input read by Joe Harwood. So he's going to read public input on behalf of Patricia Hathaway, Chandra Legu, Mike Brinkley, and Mary Kelly. So Joe, you are up.
Thank you, President Schlossberg. The first letter is from Patricia Hathaway, 1983 Jackson Street. "We lost our home in the Holiday Farm Fire, and we are extremely concerned about the post-fire logging projects occurring in the McKenzie watershed, logging which we believe puts at risk the future health of the watershed. Although we should all be concerned about the degradation of this special area, Eugene residents should be particularly concerned about contamination of their single source of water. The current logging risks the safety of our water source in a number of ways. Logging increases erosion, which increases the risk of landslides, allowing contaminants to enter the waterway. Logging roads increase sedimentation in the river, which is harmful to our fish and destroys their habitat and causes the water temperature to increase. Industrial logging sprays toxic herbicides which can drift into our waterways or be washed in by rain. With the massive and sudden amount of logging, we should expect an unprecedented amount of these dangerous chemicals to flow into the river with unknown results. Salvage logging also harms the watershed by removing the soil nutrients needed for post-fire regeneration. Lands that cannot regenerate naturally will not provide the structure and protection needed to keep the river healthy. Due to these reasons, I am encouraging E-Web to strengthen your advocacy against private lands logging projects that endanger this vital resource. The McKenzie River is a state jewel and is too special to allow the interests of a few to potentially harm this valuable resource for years to come." The second letter is from Chandra Legu, 3025 Friendly Street. "I'd like to thank the source water protection team at E-Web for their innovative and forward-looking work in supporting natural solutions to water quality and climate change, like floodplain restoration, preserving riparian forests, and the planting of native vegetation. The aftermath of the Holiday Farm Fire, and in particular, the post-fire logging already occurring on private timberland, will continue to be a challenge to our drinking water quality, and I support E-Web in taking additional steps to secure increased riparian protections on these lands, whether through land acquisition, easements, incentives for increased no-logging buffers, or other means. Such investments and work will benefit our communities for the long term." Okay, number three, this is from Mike Brinkley, 2582 West 28th. "I really commend you for your restoration efforts on the McKenzie fire area, but I am very concerned about post-fire logging. Logging will increase sedimentation into the river, causing damage to fish habitat and introduce dangerous materials into the water. This water is our drinking water. Post-fire logging will increase erosion and landslide risk. Toxic substances exposed by the fire will be washed into the river from disturbances by post-fire logging. Please restrict post-fire logging in this watershed." Okay, the fourth is from Mary Kelly, 1163 Olive Street. "Please deal with post-fire logging. It multiplies the adverse impacts of fire for drinking water supplies. Fire might impact the watershed temporarily, but studies by top experts at Oregon State University have shown that post-fire logging can magnify the effects on the river. By all accounts, there is so much logging that the McKenzie Highway closes on a regular basis because of the trucks. It is just exacerbating the situation." And that's it.
All right, and Anne, is Madeline Cohen here?
No, she did not join.
Okay, so that is the end of our public testimony, so the public testimony period is now closed, and all Commissioners have an opportunity to comment if they so choose. So, Sonia.
Well, thank you, everyone, for providing testimony tonight. It's always very helpful to hear from the community. And, you know, I have one question that I'm hoping at the end maybe Frank can answer. So we heard quite a bit of testimony tonight about the logging upriver, and aside from the properties that we own, I mean, most of that is private land, so my guess is that we don't really have a say over it, other than we're trying to help the landowners, you know, shore up the, you know, the riverbanks, the riparian area, so it doesn't allow a lot of runoff and seepage from these areas that are not now secured, but do we really have any influence there? Is that part of the round two and partnerships that we're building? So as we go through the evening and find that question answered, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome. Matt?
Thanks. Likewise, I just want to say thank you all for taking the time to provide testimony tonight. I think we are going to address some of the issues that were brought forward about watershed protection during our discussion this evening. I share Sonia's concern about, you know, I don't know how much influence we have, but I think that we'll be discussing that and encourage you all to listen into the conversation. Thank you.
John Barofsky.
Thank you to everybody who testified. Thank you, Jim New, with McKenzie River Trust. I know that we have a longstanding relationship with you guys and hope that we can continue that for a very long time as well. As far as the logging and the other concerns that were brought up by some of the other testimony, I hope it's in our purview to do as much as we are possible to help mitigate the impacts of the logging that's going to be taking place upriver, whether that's working with private landowners to acquire riparian areas near some of the feeder creeks and stuff like that, or whatever, but I look forward to working with staff and all of our partners upriver to try and mitigate the damage that has been done by the fire and any, try and minimize any type of damages that may result from the restoration in the upriver.
Great, thank you. Kind of cut out there, John. John Brown, welcome.
Well, thank you. I think I missed most of the public testimony, so I'll just have to pass on that, but thank you, everybody, and I'll just sit here and let my blood pressure reduce a little bit before I... But thank you, everybody, and I'll just sit here and let my blood pressure reduce a little bit before I participate. So you can only imagine.
All right, thank you. I guess deep breath. Um, I want to thank everyone for their public testimony. I think this is our first meeting post, first COVID, post-COVID meeting where we've had so much public testimony. So it's really great to see people engaging and not letting the technology get the best of us. Um, I would like to thank staff who's working really hard with the residents up around East Fortieth with the water storage tank. I know that there's been some back and forth with what's going on there. And I really appreciate that the staff is taking the time to reach out to the residents up there and walk through the site and really try to make sure that we come up with a plan that is beneficial for everybody. And then lastly, regarding the clearcutting, just to add on to Sonia's question, I'm curious if there's any regulatory work or like legal or legislation stuff that's being put forth to address clearcutting. And I know that there was a bit of an expose or something in the paper recently about timber industry and what's going on there. But I'm curious if there's any kind of work at the state and federal level to address that. All right. And that is the end of our public testimony. And moving on to board item number four, which is approval of consent calendar A. Anybody have anything I want to?
I've just moved to adopt consent calendar A.
All right, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimously passed. Moving on to number five, approval of consent calendar B.
Move to adopt.
All right, second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, well, that was pretty easy. Now we can move on to general business items. So I'm running a little ahead, but I don't think that matters. I'm assuming that the Lieberg-Walterville crew is all queued up.
Well, thank you, President Schlossberg. I would also like to think just as a make a comment that appreciate all the Q and A that we get from the board prior to the consent items being approved, just so that the public is aware, we do publish the various questions and responses that the board supplies us. So those consent calendar items can can be understood and and be discussed if necessary. So some of that occurs prior to the meeting, just want to provide that for context. I want to make sure that the the right crew is queued up here. Mike, are you available to jump in in a moment?
Yep, we're we're set to go, Frank.
Okay, great. I will kick things off. Go ahead with the next slide, please.
I think I have control. Uh, let me see. That worked. There we go.
Great. I will just kick this off before we get into the meat of the presentation. And with the really the bottom line upfront for commissioners, and we're asking for your direction on moving to the next step. There's a number of steps that will and decisions that will need to be made regarding the Lieberg Canal, Lieberg Generation, and at some point in the future also including Walterville. But we've come up with some immediate recommendations relative to the canal specifically as it relates to generation. We are recommending that in the near term, the board reduce the risk of water conveyance along that strip of the canal, but we do not return the generating site to operation. As you'll see throughout the presentation, the levels of investment are significantly different between either returning Lieberg to its generation capabilities versus simply doing what's called SWC here, which is stormwater conveyance and managing and managing the risk of the canal itself and the water conveyance, which we are obligated to do under our license. And so that's going to be our recommendation, that we go with water conveyance only. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mike and his staff and and to go through the the various technical status, as well as the economics of which we drew that conclusion. So, Mike, you can take it from here.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Good evening, Commissioner Schlossberg and and commissioners. This is really an organizational goal that carried over from 2020. And and we were tasked with developing a TBL-based plan for the Lower McKenzie River hydro projects in compliance with what the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, was asking us to do and in collaboration with the McKenzie Valley Community. In previous board materials, we identified two scenarios that we started analyzing. The first was a return to service, and the second was a conversion to use as a stormwater conveyance mechanism only. We further developed these scenarios and added a number of variations so that we have a range of costs and timelines that we can look at. I'm going to run through sort of the introductory material and and do so very quickly so that everyone's on the same page going in. Because I know we have two new commissioners, and I want to make sure everyone's familiar with the canal and its features and its history. The canal went into service in nineteen thirty. It's it's an earthen, five-mile-long, unlined canal that begins at Lieberg Lake and it ends at the Forbay just west of the town of Lieberg. Just I today had the opportunity to watch a construction video from when they built the canal. It was done using horses and steam equipment. And they blew they blew up a whole bunch of tree stumps and other things, large rocks. So it wasn't today's construction technique. This project and all of our hydro projects are regulated by FERC. And FERC's Portland office houses the the regional dam safety program that we all answer to. Here's the canal. I'm going to try and use the the moving mic head here. I think you can see. So it starts up at Lieberg Lake. So the lake exists for the purpose of damming up the river and putting water into the canal. And the blue line is the is the river. The red dotted line is the canal. And so again, it goes from up near Lieberg Lake where it starts and then ends, goes past the town of Lieberg and ends here at the Forbay, where the water transitions to the Penn Stock and then goes under the highway and to the powerhouse. It's about a five-mile-long section, and the canal is hugging the north slope of the of the valley. And for the most part, is on the north side of the highway. The project, as I mentioned, went into to service in nineteen, well, it went into operation in the early nineteen thirties. In two thousand, the year two thousand, we relicensed the Lieberg project with the Walterville project. So we combined the licenses together, and they're licensed for forty years, so through twenty forty. We're roughly halfway through that license. The Lieberg Powerhouse, which when operating, that's the picture of it on the left, can provide nine average megawatts of energy to E-Web. And together with Walterville, they provide roughly thirteen average megawatts to help us serve load in in our service territory. And the jet, the output from these projects is dedicated to serve load under our current Bonneville contract. Again, here's here's a view of the of the canal. This gives you some idea of the topography. And there's a couple of areas that we're interested in. One is this area down here. It's known as, this is Cogswell Creek that comes out of the the timberlands to the north. That's one area of concern. I have a picture of it later. And Cogswell is one of the major tributaries. The other major tributary is Johnson Creek, and that's right here. And our other area, primary area of concern is the Ames Reach, which is this area down here, just just west of where Johnson Creek comes in. So those are two areas. But really, the canal has leaked from from day one when it went into service. And and we've been monitoring those leaks really since the since the canal went into service. Here's some pictures showing some of the investigations we've done recently. In in the summer of twenty eighteen, we found evidence of soil movement, also called piping, at several of the seeps we were monitoring. This picture here in the lower right is a seepage monitoring weir. We currently have about fifteen of these spread along the canal, and we have staff who monitor them on a daily basis. They give us an idea of the water that's flowing out of the seeps, but also can collect soil that comes out. And you start to see soil, that's more problematic because that means soil is moving out of the embankment and into the into the weir, out of the canal embankment. So that's called piping. We started to see piping at two of the areas that we were monitoring. We notified FERC, and at that time, FERC ordered us to cease operation, close the headgates and de-water the canal. We did those things and and have been sort of monitoring the seeps since and doing some other investigations. So the picture in the upper left shows some subsurface investigation of the canal embankment that we undertook in early two thousand nineteen in response to the the piping that we saw. And the the picture on the right shows some improvements or temporary repairs that we made following the drawdown. And the idea here was we would take out the heavily impacted saturated soils and replace them with more porous gravel or sand material and then a seepage blanket on top and install a French drain. And so that was to collect the seepage as it came out and prevent further piping from the canal. This is what the canal looks like today. It's looked like this since the fall of of eighteen. The headgates are closed, and we receive stormwater from side streams, Johnson Creek and Cogswell Creek primarily, but all a bunch of other side streams. And that stormwater is emptied through canal exit points, but not through the turbines. The turbines haven't operated since we shut them off in late eighteen. We continue to monitor and maintain the canal as required. But but FERC has ordered us to not open the headgates, so we can't let water into the canal other than what comes into the storm, and we can't generate power. And and so what we're doing is basically maintaining and monitoring the canal in its current condition. I also want to point out, however, that the current condition is not acceptable to FERC. They've told us that they expect us to take action to address the primary issues identified in the current condition, and those being the the embankment soils that are seismically not stable and and the seepage issues that we continue to see. I mentioned two areas in particular we are interested in. I'm going to touch a little bit about them before I turn this over to Mark. This is the Cogswell Creek area. And if I can get the little mic head to move here. In this area, just downstream of the bridge, we saw a whole bunch of seepage kind of coming out of the toe of the embankment, so in this area. And this is where we first saw some piping. The subsurface investigations that we did up here on the canal embankment revealed that the core material, which should be the stable material that prevents both seepage from getting through and stability to the the embankment, was saturated soil. It's looks like native locally sourced material. It's saturated and potentially unstable. So this this meant that we now know that we not only have a seepage issue, but we also have an earthquake stability issue with the canal. And so and then for purposes of today's discussion, as we get into it, the seismic risk to E-Web to this canal is greater with the canal full of water than in its current condition. And this is the Ames Reach, looking downstream at the Ames Reach. It's kind of this area in here. And it's a fairly steep section, maybe the most, the steepest section of the canal embankment. As we contemplated a path forward, General Manager Lawson asked us to take on this TBL analysis as an organizational goal. For us, the first step from a technical standpoint was to hire qualified consultants to help us and then for us to engage directly with FERC. And we did both those things last year. That work's been underway now for almost a year. We got a little bit slowed down because of COVID. We got a little bit slowed down because of the Holiday Farm Fire, but we've made great progress over the last, I would say, four or five months. And that leads to tonight's discussion. And so with that, I'm going to ask Mark to take over. And let's see if I can figure out how to. There, I stopped control, Mark, so you should be able to pick up control on the slides.
Okay. And let's see, Mike, if if I need you to advance them, I think I might just ask for that because I'm not seeing controls showing up. All right. So yeah, thank you, Mike, and good evening, commissioners. Next slide there, Mike, and I'll continue on. The backgrounder that you had included an attachment with quite a bit of technical information included. And I was going to just give you guys a highlight of that information and and really focus in on our findings and conclusions. So that the the work that was done, and it is foundational to the effort, included hydraulic modeling of the canal, simulating breaches of the canal at high consequence locations, estimating those consequences to property and the potential for life loss, and brainstorming potential failure modes, et cetera. That was covered in a fair amount of detail in that backgrounder attachment. But really, the highlight that I wanted to make here is that throughout this process, it was not just E-Web and our consultants, but we also involved FERC in the planning of our risk analysis. And they also participated in the actual workshops themselves. So it was important for us not only to come to our own understandings around Lieberg risk, but also formulate an understanding of FERC perspectives on those canal risks. So next slide, please, Mike.
Okay, did I go to?
Nope, you're good. So in in order to analyze a five-mile-long canal that goes through varied terrain, we broke it into ten separate reaches. And they're shown on this drawing, alternating dark and white, and focused in specifically on two of those reaches that Mike touched on, Cogswell and Ames, where we had the most subsurface information. But each of these reaches have have somewhat levels of uniformity with respect to the embankment configuration, its height and and quality, as well as its condition, and then the consequences associated with the potential breach of those different reaches. Next slide, please. So really jumping to the results, the the highest risks that we found were seismic and specifically in the area of the Ames Reach. This is the taller, steeper portion of the canal embankment. That was identified as our highest risk at the Lieberg Canal. Next level of risk down was another type of seismic vulnerability related to internal erosion following an earthquake. Also seismic stability at that Cogswell Reach ranked at that same high level, as well as internal erosion, the piping that Mike mentioned, which is what triggered the canal to go out of service in October of twenty eighteen. Followed by that level of risk, we have internal erosion failure potentials at Ames as well. And then landslide blockages. We have some steep slopes above Ames that, under a heavy storm event, could come down and block the canal. Or could that kind of a land movement could be triggered by a seismic event. Next slide, please. Mike also mentioned the tributary creeks that are coming in. And so when we constructed the canal back in the late twenties, we intercepted not just those two that Mike mentioned, Johnson and Cogswell, but a number of smaller streams as well. And so even in a flood condition, when we close the canal headgates, the canal continues to receive water from those tributary streams. And so there's another potential failure mode lurking there in the form of debris getting into the canal during those severe storm events. And and debris presents a risk in that it could block our outlets, either at the Forbay, the Siphon spillway there, or at the wastewater gate, our kind of midpoint drainage point. And and then also at bridges, you could have debris get lodged on a bridge, or if you had a large enough tree fall in, you could almost create a nest of logs anywhere on the canal. So that's another important level four or five risk. anywhere on the canal. So that's another important level four or five risk. And then other seismic risks of import relate to the canal headgates. If we have a seismic event, one of our immediate actions is to intervene by de-watering the canal. So we would do that by closing the headgates and opening the drain gate at the wastewater. Either of those are vulnerable to seismic damage as well, in which case they might not function when you need them to. Next slide, please. So conclusions-wise, we focused in, as I mentioned, on Cogswell and Ames because that's where we had the most information, particularly subsurface investigation information. But we did extrapolate those results to the other eight reaches of the canal. And to varying degrees, we ranked high risks on those others as well. So really, our finding is that the capital investments might be most immediate and urgent in the Ames and Cogswell area, but there are similar investments needed along the length of the canal. So those substantial investments are required for operation for generation, but also for conversion to stormwater, which I'll touch on a bit later. We also note that deterioration of the canal embankments continues. Even though we're not generating power, we are continuing to convey stormwater through the canals. And as a result, during those periods of time, even when you're not generating power, you can expose yourself to the potential for embankment failure during these heavy storm periods when there's a lot of water in the canal from the tributary creeks. So it is important that, as Mike said before, it's, you know, do nothing is not an option. Either path forward will involve ongoing risk reduction measures, and we do need to move forward on those in the near term. In either case, return to service or stormwater conveyance. Next slide, please. The extended repairs is uncertain at this point in time. We do have limited, you know, information on a couple of locations along the canal. And so that means additional subsurface investigation is required in order to come up with complete repair approaches. And in the course of doing that, it's possible that we could discover that we have, you know, favorable findings, that the risks that we've characterized are actually lower, and thus the cost to mitigate them is lower. Or those findings could be unfavorable, meaning higher risks and higher costs. And so that does reflect in the cost estimates, you're going to see a little bit later from Patty, in that we do have pretty broad ranges there pending better understanding of subsurface conditions along the length of the canal. It's important to note that construction of repairs would need to take place during dry weather seasons, and that does challenge construction timelines. So when we thought about return to service potentials in terms of when the timing might happen, 2026 was determined to be about as quickly as it could be accomplished. The reduced canal flow rate is another risk mitigation measure that was highlighted. And if you could operate the canal at a lower flow rate, thirteen hundred CFS, that's enough for one of the two generating units at the Carmen Plant, would translate into roughly six average megawatts, and that's in comparison to the full capacity of twenty-five-hundred-and-nine average megawatts. That we did consider both of those scenarios in the return to service. You know, one a little higher risk than the other. And it's important to note that implementation of these risk reduction measures would take place over time and that residual risks would persist until the canal is fully rehabilitated. Next slide, please. Many of these same findings pertain to the stormwater conveyance as well. We also, you know, to safely mothball and continue conveying stormwater, we do need to do more subsurface investigation that could result in differing costs for the remediation. So that, again, you will see bans of cost for the stormwater conveyance options as well. Similarly, the weather, it has to be favorable for that kind of improvement work. The important thing, though, is that the length of canal that we need to focus on becomes reduced with a stormwater conveyance approach. We can reconfigure the canal in a way that takes advantage of some of the existing former stream channels. The smaller ones might be redeveloped without impact to, a significant impact to subsequent development between the canal and the river. But that's not entirely true, and that fourth bullet points out that some of our former stream channels have been developed that does make them more challenging to reconvert. So again, residual risk will pertain with stormwater conveyance as well until full rehabilitation. The thing is, though, that those significant risks would really only be present during stormwater periods. So unlike an operating canal where those waters in the canal at all times, stormwater conveyance is only there during storm periods. Next slide, please. Just a depiction here of a bit of what I was talking about with respect to the stormwater conveyance scenario. There's two different colors depicted here, the purple and blue. The blue portions are how we would route the major creeks, Cogswell and Johnson, back to the river. Those portions of the embankment would be needing remediation in order to safely continue conveying water from the canal to the river. One would take it to the wastewater gate, that's the Cogswell Creek direction, and then Johnson Creek would go to the forebay. I did want to point out, though, that in terms of considering our options there, we would need to compare the cost for remediation of the canal for Johnson Creek to the forebay to the cost of potentially redeveloping that former Johnson Creek channel to the river. It would entail quite a bit of expense, some potential impacts to downstream development, construction of a highway bridge, et cetera, but that would be another alternative you would want to look at and make sure you are making the most cost-effective approach. Similar is true for Cogswell Creek, but there we do have, you know, even more challenging development conditions between the creek and the river, between the canal and the river. Next slide, please. So based on the information we developed, we did come up with a range of scenarios that Patty will show cost for momentarily. The scenarios are vary in terms of the speed with which we could implement them. They also vary within, with respect to the canal operating capacity, and they vary with respect to the degree of risk reduction. And one of them that we included in there, Scenario 1E, is the most robust safety improvement by converting the earth and embankment to a concrete flume. It was also so incredibly expensive that we did not, you know, show it in the range with the others. It was considerably more expensive. And then the stormwater conveyance options that we looked at, also it's kind of speed of implementation as well as degree of risk reduction in terms of the remediation work that you do. So those are the scenarios that we presented. Patty will follow up with some costs, but we did want to take pause here just to see if the board had any questions regarding technical or background information before Patty gets into the costs.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark and Mike. I have a bigger global question. My tenure on the board spanned when we were, I just came on the board when we were relicensing this. I think it was a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty million. I don't know what it was. I don't mean to minimize the cost. But how did this get missed? How did we have all these experts and everybody saying, "Go ahead and do this." And a lot of the risks that you posed here, saying like the gates could fail during a seismic event. Well, that hasn't changed in the last twelve years. And how did all these, and you said it leaked since they built it, why didn't somebody raise a red flag and say, "Don't spend this hundred million bucks"?
Yeah, John, I wondered that myself for as long as this has been a problem, so the last couple of years. What did we miss and how did we miss it? And, you know, I think this is the answer. So this slice, this project got licensed in, or relicensed in twenty or the year 2000, but really the work that led up to the relicensing took place in the early 1990s. And that was thirty years ago. So it could be that it wasn't leaking as bad, that really there's a time differential where we've reached the end of this canal's service life, where it's just gotten bad. I mean, we've noticed in the last fifteen years, the seepages have gotten worse and the piping issue is something that only became apparent to us in 2018. The other thing is the seismic issue that you bring up. We, you know, in nineteen ninety, we didn't have large earthquakes in Oregon, or at least we didn't know about them. And so the whole awareness of Cascadia and the magnitude of the earthquakes we need to be concerned about really sort of took off in the mid-nineties and into the 2000s. And by then, the project was already licensed. So, you know, to really get back and summarize the answer to your question, you know, we've looked back at the relicensing work that was done in the 1990s. We don't see anywhere where people were looking at the condition of the canal or the condition of the embankment or asking the questions that probably should have been asked. And we missed it, but I'm not sure that we would have got it even if we had been looking.
Thank you. That's an excellent answer. Could I follow up with one more, Mindy? Just a question, a comment. As you know, I'm kind of an advocate on fisheries and things, and I know that the Corps of Engineers is required to provide water to both the salmon and trout hatcheries. And ODFW has designed an initial coffer dam, and it only takes fifty CFS to supply water to the salmon hatchery. And that salmon hatchery serves not only the Mackenzie, but the Willamette, the Columbia, all the way out into the ocean. I mean, that's something that I certainly hope that we can incorporate into our go-no-go design because we don't have to pay for it. The Corps of Engineers has to do it, and I think we just have to facilitate getting that done. And I know Cogswell Creek is important to attract the salmon, the water comes down to do that. So hopefully, in the considerations in the future, if we could at least work with with ODFW and the Corps of Engineers to make sure that we don't have to scrap those hatcheries because that's a huge economic impact for Mackenzie Basin and a lot of recreation was up and down all the way to the ocean.
Yeah, Commissioner Brown, Mark knows more about the details than I do, so I'll let him speak in a minute. But we've been working with both the salmon hatchery and the trout hatchery since we ran into these difficulties with FERC. And we're aware of their water needs, and we know that they've, because the Corps of Engineers is required to provide them water, they've got folks from the Corps' Hydro Design Center currently working on water alternatives for the salmon hatchery.
Thank you. That's really refreshing to know and, you know, it gives me hope that we're not going to have to do that. And I just hope that we can have EWEB's cooperation with doing that because I know that we're not in the business of providing salmon and trout habitat, but we are. We have the biggest impact on the Mackenzie and the watershed, and I want to make sure if we can cooperate with them that we do that. Thank you.
Sonia.
Hi, I just had a quick question, kind of following up on the fish hatchery. When we went and did the tour, it looked like the fish hatchery was not operational. Maybe it was just the pools outside were not open. Is that just due to COVID? Or is that because of the impact from the canal being, it didn't look like that should have impacted them right now, that the canal is downstream further. So having it lower is more of an impact downstream, but does anybody know and could help me a little bit with that?
Yeah. Commissioner Carlson, are you talking about the hatchery, the trout hatchery at the dam or the salmon hatchery further downstream?
At the dam.
Yeah, as far as I know, that's operational and they're raising trout, and they should be getting all of the water and stuff that they need. So I don't know if there's an issue. We haven't been made aware of it.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to know because, you know, obviously there are community member that's impacted by whatever we do, especially in that area, so. Okay, thank you.
John Baraski.
Thank you. So can you make this clear to me? If you go back to the slide that has conservation to stormwater conveyance, if we do that, is there going to be parts of the canal that are dry? Or will water be running through the whole canal?
So the tributary streams that feed the canal are highly variable seasonally. They can go from essentially dry in the late summer to raging creeks during a big storm. So it would be directly related to, you know, what the seasonal season you're talking about. So late summer, there would be portions of the canal that would be bone-dry, most likely. And even Johnson Creek and Cogswell Creek are really down to a trickle in the late summer. So it would be a very dry canal.
And the only reason I ask that, because I see green things called canal plugs. And so I wasn't sure if you were taking that and then running it right into the stream there and keeping that section so that you don't need to remediate that.
Yeah, so those plugs would be strategically placed so that the smaller streams that come into the canal can be routed out of the canal. And so those plugs are intended to do that, to try to keep the Cogswell Creek high flows and the Johnson Creek high flows out of the rest of the canal so that we don't have to strengthen more embankment than absolutely necessary to get that water back to the river.
And then my final question is, you know, you kind of made it seem like, you know, we don't really know, and this will go into cost coming up in the next set of slides, but we don't really know how much it's going to cost until we actually get in there and start putting shovel to dirt. And I'm wondering if there is a phased approach where we get in and start doing conversion to stormwater, find out that it's not as intensive for the whole length of the canal as we thought, and could phase it into power production if things get better on, you know, if it looks like it's not as bad as we thought.
I would say that is possible, that we have an intent to, you know, focus our initial efforts on portions of the canal that are beneficial, regardless of which ultimate path is picked. But so yes, I would say that that kind of a phased approach is available.
All right. Matt, do you have any questions you want to ask at this point?
No questions for me. Just thanks for the presentation, Mark. Appreciate the detail.
And no questions from me, but just to comment, John Baraski, you must be an optimist because usually construction things end up going worse, not better, but I guess that is always the hope.
Thank you, President Slasberg. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patty if I can. For some reason, my... Holly, I'm having a hard time advancing the slide. There we go. I don't know who did that. I think maybe you did, Holly, but Patty, you're up.
Okay. Does everyone see the chart that's up there? Mine took quite a while to come up, so I want to make sure that it is connected. So again, good evening, commissioners, and we're transitioning now to the sort of financial or economic aspects of this conversation. And having completed this initial stage of the infrastructure planning, we can better inform that economic aspect of what is a really very important decision. And so displayed on the screen are the planning level cost estimates developed with our consultants. And I wanted to spend just a minute or two describing how they come to those cost estimates. The range is first determined by developing an expected level of work needed in each of the scenarios, and then combining that with a couple of different contingency costs. The first contingency reflects a potential increase to the scope of repair. For example, that the initial design is correct, but it needs to be longer or it needs to be deeper. But the initial estimate on the type of repair is correct. The second form of contingency, and one that really drives quite a bit of cost, is the potential repair type is changed, where it is no longer, after we've done additional investigations, we find that it doesn't reduce the risk as we originally intended. investigations, we find that it doesn't reduce the risk as we originally intended or doesn't accomplish the initial goal, and we need to change the type of repair that is being made. And in that case, it can be quite a bit more expensive. And that's how our consultants largely put together these ranges. And if you look at them overall, it's really very clear that the stormwater conveyance options are significantly less expensive than the return to service options. And I think as Mark connected to the infrastructure pieces, that's around the length of canal that would need to be remediated. I think, Holly, would you mind moving to our next slide? So with those cost estimates, we were able to then sort of forward on our more complete economic view and combine those infrastructure repair estimates with information. Our previous work had been done on the financial analysis of the project itself. In the table at the top of the slide, we have calculated the net present value of the plant in service under three separate power value assumptions, a high and a medium and low power value assumption, as well as then NPV of the plant as a water conveyance facility with no generation. The NPV includes the routine operations and maintenance costs of the plant as well as the capital needs of the plant that are not associated with the canal repair work. Given the low power values and not considering the canal issues, we are really only slightly better off in operation under most power value estimates. I'm really pointing out the mid-power value and the low-power value being in operation this plant over the rest of its anticipated life loses somewhere between $12 and $14 million. Also, using these updated power values, we have combined the display of the NPV with the cost range of the scenario in the chart that you find right below that table. The NPV on each scenario is calculated using the most conservative power value, but even if you were to use the mid-power value, it doesn't change things much. You can see there's just not much difference between those two estimates. And that leads to just a little bit of variation in the NPV on the O and M side. That's the blue bars. And the green bars on that chart represent the range of cost for canal repair. And so again, in this graph, it's, all the stormwater options are anticipated to be much more economical than the return to service options. But I'd like to point out that in this particular graph, one piece is part of the next phase of what we have recommended is a little more, or initiating really, our conversations with our regulatory partners and interested parties on what a decommissioning would be, what could look like. I think as Frank mentioned, essentially, in the initial part of our conversation, we'd really, our recommendation at this point is to initiate conversations with those regulators so we can have a better sense of what that decommissioning looks like of a canal over time and estimate its costs. So I wanted to pause there for questions before I hand it over back to Mike for a little more conversation on the triple bottom line aspects of this conversation, but would point out that the decommissioning itself and its process is really very compatible with the TBL approach in that, just as Commissioner Brown mentioned, we will engage our regulatory partners. That includes folks like ODF and W and the Corps to ensure that we are really looking at not only the financial aspects of this decision, but also the societal and environmental impacts of any changes or any infrastructure improvements that we make on the canal. But let me just pause here for a little while and answer or try to answer or record and return to you with information on the economics.
Go ahead, Sonia.
I just wanted to make sure it was crystal clear on the decommissioning side of it. The convert to stormwater conveyance, the NPVs that you ran, doesn't have that decommissioning cost because you don't, without doing that further work, you don't have a clear sense of what those costs are. Is that correct?
That's correct. Each decommissioning that I have tried to become familiar with looks a little different depending on the environment it's operating in. Some decommissionings take place in very remote areas that don't have a significant development around them. And so each decommissioning can be quite different, and really working with our partners and FERC will help determine what the scope and therefore give us a better sense of what that, that both the length of time and the amount of investment that would be required.
Okay. And how long does that process, if there is a typical, take generally speaking?
Well, I would say that a decommissioning process is very similar to a licensing process, and it will take several years to come to a firm approach on how things would go. And in that timeframe, we would be keeping, of course, the board informed, but you would bring your partner, regulatory partners, together. You would have a certain set of decommissioning studies, just as you would have relicensing studies, to ensure that the public purpose of the waterway is maximized at public value.
Sorry, I just meant the initial study to get an estimate of the costs, not...
Okay, sorry, I missed.
That's okay.
Jumped ahead into a work planning kind of process. I would expect that it has a similar timeframe as our engineering estimates really put forward, and that, I think, was initiated about a year ago. I don't think it would take any longer than that.
Okay, perfect. Those are my questions. Thank you.
John Borowski.
Thank you. As somebody who's new to the board, I'm intrigued to find out where the costs that have been incurred to get these, that John Brown referred to earlier, the $100 or $120 million that has been spent on these generation facilities weighs into these type of scenarios? You know, you're saying it costs this much, but where does that preloaded capital figure into these financial recommendations?
Yeah. Patty, before you respond, let me, Commissioner, with the relicensing, the way the FERC licensing process works, you commit to making a certain level of investment and then you get a license of a certain length. And so in this case, Commissioner Brown is correct. We signed on for whatever it was, $100 million worth of improvements, which were like usual, excuse me, mostly fish ladders and fish screens and recreation improvements and things like that. And we did all that work in the year 2000 to 2004 or so, and in return, FERC gives us a 40-year license to recoup that cost. And at the end, you get, once you pay for your investment, you get a little bit of time to sort of make money on top of it. That's how the FERC licensing process works. All of these costs that Patty's talking about are in addition to and on top of and would have to be funded elsewhere by E-Web. Patty?
Yeah, that's correct. So what is calculated within the NPV is from this point forward through the end of the license.
Go ahead, Matt.
Quick question. I understand, Patty, that there's a ton of uncertainty around decommissioning. I get that. I do wonder if you can tell us if you have a sense of how many zeros come behind that.
Well, yeah, that would, I'm highly speculative on that. And it really has to do, in my mind, as to the scope of the decommissioning and whether or not with our partners that we determine that the dam remains in place. Because outside of the canal investment, and just from my limited thinking on how this goes down, is if it is determined that the best public value for the project as it stands right now for in a decommissioning is the lake remains in place, that's a whole different scale of decommissioning than if the dam is removed. And so in a dam removal scenario is a much more significant commitment to decommissioning costs. There's a tremendous amount of restoration work that would need to occur in order to do that. And I won't speculate in terms of what would be E-Web's approach.
Yeah, I won't push you to speculate. Thank you.
No problem.
What I would like to say, Commissioner, is that if we were to go to that place where we were looking at removal of the dam, we would look for other partners to potentially help us with those costs. And other licensees who have decommissioned dams as part of hydro projects have received additional funding from federal agencies who are interested in restoration. So I think that avenue would be open to us.
John Brown, did you have your hand up before?
I did. And Patty, thank you for that. And maybe just to follow up on the dam thing, because I see that as probably the, as one of the biggest unknowns here, because it's my understanding that we can't just open the roll gates and leave the dam and use it as a bridge because the salmon still won't have a way to get over the fish ladders because there won't be water for them to go up, and we have a native run of salmon up there. And so if we have to either tear the dam out to accommodate the native salmon runs or we have to run a dam in perpetuity even if we have stormwater conveyance, because I don't see any other way to get around that because the native salmon still have to get past that impediment. And if we just think we can open the roll gates, that won't work because the salmon can't migrate through open roll gates. So have that, so there is no cost of dam removal or dam retention. I mean, if we remove it, then we have to give an alternative means of ingress and egress to the homes over there, don't we?
We, go ahead, Patty.
I think, John, you touch on any, a lot of things that are on the list for further investigation. Not only how we would restore those, what's, if there are engineered solutions that fall in between, so providing water sources to the existing ladders while leaving the dam in place, I think that's a, it's going to be a fascinating and long-term conversation. I expect there to be several iterations of that, that conversation. I think you touch on some really interesting points on access to homes that are on the other side. There are not only that, but private property rights and water rights along the canal. So, you know, I think one of the things our consultants and Mark reminded me of not very long ago is that there, from their perspective, a relicensing investment and a decommissioning license, decommissioning is of similar scale in terms of both effort for planning and conversation and investment. So it's no, it is no small effort to get through this conversation. And it's a long-term one. And that's one of the reasons why we have a, from my perspective, a sort of approach that builds on some infrastructure that Mark noted while we move forward on the regulatory piece.
Thank you.
Frank? And then I have a question after you, Frank.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context on the timing aspect of this. Under, because we have a 40-year license that would typically expire in 2040, and under those kinds of conditions, you would normally make a decision 10 years prior to that 2040 timeline whether you were going to either decommission the project or relicense the project. I may be getting a little ahead of staff with this comment, but there are some benefits to E-Web and potentially the community to make that decision earlier, especially as it relates to our Bonneville contract and some of the many issues around scope that you just identified, whether there are, there could be transportation impacts, irrigation impact, water rights impacts, there's just, there's just a number of them. I would like to actually make the decision going forward whether we want to pursue a decommissioning, which also includes Walterville, by the way, because this is not, they're both part of the same license, whether to do a, take the tact of relicensing versus decommissioning and do all the research we can sometime prior to the end of 2022. The decision in front of you now is for right now, do we invest, do we, at a level that returns this to production? Or do we take the approach of mitigating risk that is associated with the canal itself and managing water? And our recommendation is to not spend an extra $30 million to get somewhere between a $5 and $12 million return on that $30 million. And so now, as we go into it, we will learn more. We're hoping that John Borowski's optimism is something we find, but that's our current recommendation. But I just wanted the board to understand, this is, this is the beginning of a series of decisions that we will be needing to make, and so we're on step one of probably, you know, 50 different steps.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of questions. So it, so back to your comment, Frank, about Bonneville, how, how will we know how Lieberg affects our Bonneville contract? Like if we decide to decommission it, what does that mean for the future in negotiating? How, yeah?
So the present contract we have expires in 2028. Our power trading group would start, in fact, they are starting to have conversations as to what this might look like if we decommission permanently. Right now, Lieberg is, and Walterville, total of about 13 average megawatts out of our total load of about 275, just to give you some context. That load is present, Bonneville assumes that we are taking Lieberg and Walterville and using it for our own load. We're not selling it on the open market, which at some point takes away from the entitlement that we would get as a preferred customer from Bonneville. That's the negotiation that has to take place prior to any decision that we would, we would come to regarding decommissioning. We would like to have access to the Bonneville power to replace that as opposed to looking at an alternate source, but that's a discussion that has to happen. And it would happen, we, I think it's a benefit to have that conversation sooner rather than later, but power, our power planning group is investigating that.
Thanks. Another question is, where would the money come from? So if we're going to decommission, or even if we're going to relicense, it's a lot of money. So do we start like a fund now? How does that work?
So I, it comes from Deborah Hart, honestly. No, I'm just kidding. The, I think part of the value of making decisions before you get down to a 10-year timeframe is there are, there are issues related to finance. You don't capitalize decommissioning, for example, and so, because there's nothing to depreciate. And so you have to create and understand your ability to finance it. I think that if we could, it's possible, we could set up a fund, some type of, some type of sinking fund for this, or start looking at other potential funding sources, but that that will be a challenge, and the more runway we have to plan around that, especially financially, and work with the community so that they're not left holding the bag either, I think the better. So that's, that's the reason I like the end of 2022 kind of timeframe, which is the tenure of this board, that's why I picked it. It's not the next board, it's this board, no pressure. But I think I'd rather do it in that timeframe than to wait until there's 10 years left on the license in 2030 to be making those kinds of decisions. I think this is going to take a long time to work out.
Great. So I just have a question for the commissioners. We can go and have another round right now, or I know that Mike has a little bit more of the presentation to do, so we can hold our questions until the end and have one final round, unless you feel really strongly that you want to ask another question now. But I saw, okay, so Mike, continue.
Holly, can you take it to the next slide, please? Thank you. So, you know, really, this started out as a TBL or triple bottom line analysis. Thank you. So, you know, really, this started out as a TBL or triple bottom line analysis. We have focused on the financial piece, the environmental and socioeconomic considerations. We got sidetracked a little bit, like I said, because of COVID, and then again, by the Holiday Farm Fire. So, so really, we haven't done a whole lot with those, but they'll be more fully explored once we have the short-term and long-term plans in place for the project, whatever that is. I think that's okay, because it's better to go to the community with some plans in place and get their reaction. So that's our intent. I do, do want the commission to be aware of a certain things, though, that do affect this. Commissioner Brown mentioned the first one. The Lieberg project starts with a dam and a bridge that creates Lieberg Lake. That's going to be the biggest challenge going forward. There are communities, towns of Lieberg and Walterville have built up around the projects. The town of Lieberg sits below the Lieberg Canal, and so anything we do with the canal is going to affect the town of Lieberg. Mark talked a lot about the side streams that are intercepted by the project, and if we decide to do away with the canal, we're going to have to find new homes for those side streams to, to flow through. One we haven't really touched on is, is there are water right holders and irrigators that use the canal to take their water out, and they have businesses, they have, that rely on that water, and they are currently not getting water like they, they used to. And, and we are working with them, but also what we decide to do with the canal will affect the irrigators and the water right holders along the canal. On the other side of the coin, diverting water into the canal at both Lieberg and Walterville does impact water quality. It has an impact on the temperature of the Mackenzie River in that lower reach, and we know that. And doing away with power generation will benefit the water quality overall in the river. And finally, this last bullet, you know, there's a number of different ways to enact risk mitigation. We've been talking about some number of ways, but you know, if you just go back to board meetings in December, we bought a piece of property. That property was one of the high-risk properties below the Ames reach of the canal. It came on the market, we saw an opportunity, and we bought that, basically to buy down our risk for that section of canal. We felt like that was a reasonable purchase to make in order to, to reduce our risks going forward. Next slide, please. So this is right back where General Manager Lawson started us. Tonight, we're asking the board to provide us with some direction on moving to the next stage. Overall, to summarize, the comparatively small scale of generation from the Lieberg and Walterville projects and the low power, low forecasted power value going forward, just do not justify reinvestment for a return to service scenario for the Lieberg Canal. So staff recommends that we invest in the canal in the near term to reduce risk, and we do so with an eye on water conveyance strategies going forward. Then we initiate, initiate dialogue with FERC and with the other partners on the river to understand our obligations with the surface water conveyance scenario, and ultimately move towards a decommissioning at some point, towards the end of the license term. And the other piece that we need to talk about is the financials. And so with some direction from the board, we'll integrate these scenarios into the long-term financial planning and the power planning processes to inform future strategies for our power supply, funding for decommissioning, and the overall financial status of the utility going forward. And with that, I am done with my slides, and we can continue the discussion.
All right. So, yeah, open it up to questions. John Brown, you haven't had a chance to go first. Would you like to be first in the queue?
Yeah, I would. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mike, and, and Mike, and everybody, Patty, for a great presentation. I'd just like to say that, you know, my direction would be when we're considering the cost of this, that it's all-inclusive, because, I mean, we've got homes up there, we've got, you know, brand-new substation, we've got new, new power lines, we've got, you know, all the fish diversion things we did on Partridge Lane for the Steelhead. I mean, I just, the economics of what we're going to walk away from is mind-boggling, when you stop and think of the magnitude of, of both Lieberg and Walterville and where we're going with that. And so, and, and that thing with the dam and everything, I just, it just, absolutely, it causes me a lot of concern about the economics of what this is going to do to us, you know, walk away versus make it run, because I just want to make sure that when we do the financial analysis, that we consider everything and not just the power part of it, because if we're going to walk away from this, or do, we can't walk away from it, but if we're going to change how we, how we operate this, I think it's, it's going to have a 100-year impact on us. So, thank you, and you have a daunting task ahead of you. Thank you.
Sonia, do you have any questions?
I, I mean, I just wanted to add in on the recommendations item. It certainly thinks, I certainly think that we need to move forward with, you know, the additional, you know, scenarios and looking at decommissioning and, and moving forward with it. It sounds like we're a ways off before really having all the information that we need to make a, a real decision on it. But I do appreciate the work that's happened so far in getting the update. I think we're on the right path. And thank you. And yeah, I agree. This doesn't look like it's easy at all. I mean, something that takes 10 years to look into the future to say, this is what we need to do, that's, that's not a small undertaking. So, thanks. That's it.
Matt?
Yeah, just a few comments. Want to appreciate the analysis done by the staff. This is super helpful, and the presentation is really, really clear. So thank you. The timeline that you've proposed, Frank, for making the decision, I think is the right one. I think moving quickly to make sure that we're making decisions early is smart. I will certainly support the staff proposal to look into a stormwater conveyance mode for this particular project. Most importantly, to me, two items, you know, as, as has been discussed tonight, you know, we're talking about major infrastructure projects in people's backyards. And so I think it's really important that we, we begin communication with those neighbors that are, whatever we do, are going to be affected by the actions that we as a board and we as an entity take. So I'm really supportive of early outreach and, and really clear, direct communication from us. And lastly, assuming we're going down a road of decommissioning, I'll be, all, all things being equal, you know, we never know what all the variables are going to be, but I'm going to be most interested in whatever option is most beneficial to restoring native salmon runs. So that's all I have to say. Thanks very much.
All right, John Borowski.
Thank you. Well, I think I'm going to be the outlier here, and it's probably because I am a little bit naive, but I'm leaning towards return to service. And I'm concerned that if we take a vote today to go to the SWC scenario, that is a recommendation for decommissioning. It doesn't give us that option, because we're already starting to do the work on stormwater conveyance. So when Frank says we'll make that decision in 2022, or by 2022, no, that decision's being made tonight. And one of the things that I, again, I may be naive, and I know it's going to cost a lot of money, but I'm with Commissioner Brown as far as we've, we've got a 90-year commitment to these projects that we've invested in over, over those times. The other thing that I'm concerned about is we are decommissioning renewable energy. And, and to me, renewable energy at this time is, is at a premium, and it's only going to get more so. And so to, to say that we're going to just walk away from nine to 12 megawatts, well, you know, again, I may be naive, but I'm on a return to service bandwagon in, in my votes, I think.
All right. I'm going to jump in, and then we'll have another round. Sonia, I see your hand raised. So I, well, first of all, thank you. That was a really thorough and easy-to-digest presentation, so I appreciate that. I have a question about, about the power planning. So if we were to decide on decommissioning or not, part of what we have to know is, what does it mean in terms of a Bonneville contract? And so I guess maybe the bigger question is, what is the timeline, or how do you see the timeline for what decisions need to be made, or what information we're going to have to kind of digest? Because we can't make that decision tonight, and we're not going to make it next month or the month after. So how do you, how do you see that playing out?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question. And I think in the immediate, right, so we, we have things that we need to do to improve the safety of the canal that will work for both return to service or water conveyance. And, and FERC is looking to us to do that. So coming out of this meeting, we will start to work with our consultants and our regulators to figure out what those actions are, and what they might cost, and how we might get there. And we'll be able to provide that back to the board, I would say, you know, sometime by like, you know, mid-year or so, we'll have a better idea. The, the second thing is, you know, it's going to take us years to actually complete that work. There's more field work that's needed to prepare for that, that work, and it's going to take years to, you know, get it contracted, designed, and built. And so we're probably talking five years before we're able to really contemplate either a return to service or, or a full water conveyance. And, and that starts to line up really well with the decisions that we'll be making as a utility around the Bonneville contract in 2028. So I think, to answer your question, and, and I want to check to make sure I am answering your question, I think, you know, the immediate need is the next two or three years where we're working on making the canal safe, and then we start working as, as a utility and as a board to, or towards whatever that next step might be. And it should be clear at that point, whether we have a return to service or a stormwater conveyance scenario is our best bet. I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Schlossberg, this is, this is Susan Ackerman. I just wanted to jump in on the Bonneville question. It looks like Frank may have stepped away temporarily, but we would have to go through a process to take the power supplied by these canals out of our regional power sales contract with Bonneville. And then the question is whether there will be replacement hydro available from Bonneville to fill that gap. And that is something that we just don't know right now, whether it's there, but this is the sort of planning that the power planning group works on all the time. And, and we could begin that work with Bonneville fairly shortly, once we've got some ideas in place.
Great. Thank you. I know my time is up, but I'm just going to go ahead, and then we'll do a second round for everybody, because I know people have more questions. I think it would be really great if we could maybe see a sketch of what a timeline would look like for us, like what information we would get first and what we would get later. To piggyback on what Matt said about outreach to the community, we have our Upriver meeting in April. And I think that a lot of people up there are going to have questions about both the restoration of the Mackenzie after the fire, but also this. And so it's a great opportunity for us to begin some real outreach up there. And then also, I think it's really important for us to schedule some work sessions and figure out how long it will take to get some of this really important information, because this is so, this is a huge decision to have to make. And I want to make sure that we have enough time to really delve into it and digest it, and also know how long it's going to take to get some of these answers to these questions that we have, so that we can realistically plan that. Because, you know, 2022 still seems, you know, a little far off, but it's going to come before we know it. So I want to make sure that we're really mindful and we plan this out well. Frank?
Yeah, thanks, President Schlossberg. I think understanding the schedule is important. When I look at the options, simply as they were presented tonight, there's, there's some level in, and this is an investment to, to continue through the existing license. So, so this is an investment of either somewhere in the $30 million or somewhere in the $60 million range. The, the question there being, is that additional increment necessary or, or desirable for the ability to produce electricity for that remainder, remaining period of the license? There's a number of different investigations, whether that be FERC or Bonneville, there's, there's pieces that can provide some context to that. The, a, a complete decommissioning decision wouldn't happen until near the end of the license. And so now, there's, there's some potential benefits to doing it sooner. We need to clarify those for the board. I don't think we'll be doing any kind of construction that would preclude us from looking at future paths. I mean, that's, that's something that we'll be working with the board on as, as we go. So I don't think this boxes, boxes us into a corner. But to, to answer Matt's question, just right now, we're talking tens of millions of dollars to get us through the end of the license, either managing water or producing electricity as well. So this is a, I think we tried to classify, this is a step-by-step process, and there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle. And eventually, we're going to have to work with the community, we're going to have to work, work together to understand what all those pieces are, so that we can look a little bit beyond the near-term horizon. Right now, we're, we're looking at a pretty near-term horizon, and, and the direction we're looking for is, yeah, we're, we're kind of okay with this, this initial $30 million, because we pretty much have to. That's, that's really the compulsory level of investment, just to manage water and risk. There's a lot of different ways we can do that, so we'll, we'll explore that further. But your request is, is valid. I, I think we can put together some, some sessions and some schedules and some timelines for the board.
Yep. And Frank, I want to throw something out to, to add to what you just said. One of, one of the things that I think is important is, if we make investments now for a stormwater conveyance strategy, right, those investments are not lost, should we in the future, if the power market changes, change our mind and decide to start generating power again. Any investment we make for a stormwater conveyance strategy has benefit for a future return to service.
All right. Sonia, you had your hand raised before.
Oh, I, I just had a brief comment, because I, it sounded like I was hearing the other commissioners were thinking that we needed to vote tonight, whether to decommission or not. And I think the staff and others have answered that that is not what we're doing tonight. We're just giving recommendations on kind of yes, please go and gather more information, or not. I mean, that really, to me, is the recommendation, what we're not even really voting on tonight. I don't think there's a motion that we're going to be, you know, entertaining. It's really just giving them feedback so they know kind of the general direction to go in, so that they can bring us back something maybe years down the road, that we will actually vote on to make a decision. So that was all. Thanks.
John Brown?
Just a quick comment. Just Frank and Mike, do we have something that we can learn from the decommissioning studies they're doing on Cougar, Big Cliff, and Detroit right now? Because they're talking about shutting those down generation, not because they have a problem to fix or a canal to plug, just because they cost more to run than they generate. And that's the Corps of Engineers, and that's three facilities that are, you know, one of them's on our watershed. And is there something we can learn from what they're doing, or we can piggyback that study, because it's already funded with, you know, COVID money?
Yeah, I, I, I think, Commissioner Brown, we can. Now, that's a little bit different. Part of that analysis is the fact that they need to add a lot of fish mitigation at those, at those facilities. And so it's not just a present sort of operating analysis. This is an analysis given a lot more fish mitigation at, at those sites. But yes, we have, I think that's a two-year study. It was authorized at the end of the year, so there's an opportunity to learn from that, as well as we do have a lot of contacts in the industry, some of which who have been through decommissioning processes in, in the past. And so I think there's a lot of opportunity to learn from others as we go.
John Borowski, do you have any other questions, comments?
Yeah, so I think I can
Yeah, so I think I can, and can come along and thank you, Sonia. I, I understand that this isn't the decision tonight, but, but. So on the second bullet point on this slide, I would feel more comfortable if that read the way it does there, but also initiate a dialogue with FERC, with staff to help determine E-Web's obligation under a return to service and relicensing scenario as well. Because right now, the way it reads is we're, we're going to start talking to FERC about stormwater conveyance and decommissioning, but there is no conversation with FERC about fully restoring and relicensing. So if, if that could be part of that recommendation, I, I would be, I would feel more comfortable.
Yeah, John, I think we can incorporate that. I think part of the reason we omitted that was having been through a relicensing process recently, we probably have a little better feel for what that side of the equation is as opposed to a decommissioning process. But I, I think that we, we can include that.
All right, Matt, you are last up.
Nothing else from me, thank you very much.
President Schlossberg, could I add one thing before we move on in the agenda item?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I, I just wanted to thank Mike McCann. As, as you know, this is, this is Mike's last hurrah at a, at a board meeting. And he's, he's been a really, as, as you can even see in his knowledge of, of the topic here, been part of E-Web for 18 years and, and really provided a tremendous amount of leadership and value to the community as well as to E-Web and to the past, this board and past boards. And he's, he's going to part retire, part work. I still haven't figured out what he's doing there, but he's moving on and I wanted to, we're going to miss him tremendously. Rod has some plans to, to backfill and, and, you know, move ahead, but we're going to miss Mike a lot. Mike's not, not replaceable. So Mike, thank you very much, and you're going to be missed.
Thank you, Frank. I, I will, the, the person who follows me in the agenda, you're going to hear from Carl in a minute. Carl's the one who got me to E-Web 18, 19 years ago. And I, I would say I, I count myself as incredibly lucky to have spent 18 years working on the Mackenzie River mostly. And, you know, all of you know, it's a wonderful place. It's our, it's our watershed, it's where we play. And, you know, it suffered a terrible tragedy this past September, but it'll come back. And I know it'll be important for E-Web for many years to come. So it's been really a pleasure working for E-Web all these years. And I'm not sure what I'm doing next either, Frank, except trying to play, pay for college. So after that, we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for your service, Mike.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. You'll have to come back when we're in person and we can celebrate your retirement together.
I would love to do that when we can do that safely.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
I hope it wasn't anything I said.
All right, we are at 7:29 and it is time for our break. So why don't we just add on an extra minute to make it even 7:35 when we come back?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Everyone is taking the last second left to come back. All of us sitting in front of Zoom all day long or Teams, whatever. Great. So all the Commissioners are here. Hopefully Frank will be back in just a second, but it is now 7:36. And we are on our next agenda item, number nine, State of the Mackenzie Watershed Report, a Mackenzie Watershed Recovery and Restoration Plan.
Good evening, President Schlossberg, Commissioners and General Manager Lawson. For the record, my name is Karen Kelly and I'm the Water Operations Manager for E-Web. With me tonight is Carl Morgenstern, Watershed Restoration Program Manager. And we're excited to discuss a number of topics with you tonight regarding our beloved Mackenzie River watershed, along with plans for its recovery from the Holiday Farm Fire. Next slide, please. To start off, I'd like to refresh everyone's understanding of E-Web's primary interest in the Mackenzie watershed. As a public water system, we follow the multiple barrier approach to save drinking water. This is an integrated system of procedures, processes and tools that collectively prevent or reduce the contamination of drinking water from source to tap in order to reduce risks to public health. The approach includes source water protection, a robust water treatment system, a secure water supply network, water quality monitoring and emergency preparedness, including community involvement. It takes work in each of these areas to effectively manage that risk. Tonight, Carl will be talking with you about how the effects of the fire increased the threat to the quality of our sole drinking water source, how our source protection program has contributed to our resilience and how our restoration efforts can further reduce the risks to our drinking water quality. Excuse me, not only from the treatment plant, but also throughout the system and to the customer's tap. This conversation will cover quality and reliability of our water source and our ability to meet our customers' needs in the long term. But it really poses the question of stewardship to the board in terms of strategic investment opportunities in our watershed for the future. Next slide, please. We're going to be covering the following topics. First, a brief overview of the 2020 State of the Watershed Report, which is a summary of our source water protection work for the calendar year and was provided in your written materials. The report includes the normal source protection programs and E-Web's initial response to the Holiday Farm Fire. Next, we'll review a summary of work and funding necessary to carry on initial restoration activities into 2021. And finally, we'll give an overview of the proposed five-year Mackenzie Watershed Restoration Program and Long-Term Financial Plan. In particular, we're hoping to provide enough information to you tonight about the 2021 budget amendment to be able to return next month for your approval. Likewise, we're opening the conversation with you about the proposed restoration plan and long-term financial planning to ensure we arrive at a common understanding of the needs and opportunities for investment to be able to return in May or June to you with a formalized plan for your approval. Next slide, please. And now I'll turn it over to Carl.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. And as you know, the state of our watershed, as you, as tonight's meeting has shown, is in need of some tender loving care. And the watershed, seeing the watershed report that you all have in your background are really pointed to some declines as a result of the, the Holiday Farm Fire. Clearly, the wildfire impacts was a, was a huge one, a significant impact on the watershed. And our water quality had, had saw some slight declines because of that. And of course, as was alluded to earlier this evening from a number of speakers, forestry is, is ramping up salvage logging at levels that have not been experienced before. And so I think, you know, the, the picture here is that, you know, we, we are seeing some impacts, some short-term and some longer-term impacts that we expect from this fire. And I think, you know, what we've designed from the initial start as well as where we're going really starts to mitigate for those impacts and helps kind of position us for a more resilient stance moving forward. Next slide, please. Excuse me, I've been waiting all night to talk and now my throat is a little cracky. So as you know, and as you can anticipate, the Holiday Farm Fire has had some impacts on our water quality. These impacts have been not as great as we originally thought, given the conditions that we were facing, where we saw increasing concentrations of some metals, nutrients, of course, solids, bacteria, carbon, that were happening during storm events. But when we were out of a storm event and just base flow, essentially the quality returned back to pre-fire levels. And so the concentrations, even though we're seeing these upticks during storms, the concentrations that we're seeing of these various constituents are, are well below any health-based criteria or MCLs. So that's the good news, I guess, is that we have water quality impacts. But after Hayden Bridge is done doing its amazing work, the water that is still being provided to our customers is really the same excellent water as pre-fire. Next slide, please. So when we first got up into the watershed after the fire was contained and were able to go take a look at what we had before us, it was a site, of course, that, that brought tears to my eyes. The ash and debris, asbestos, hazardous materials, all right along the river. There's over 430 homes that were destroyed. And as you can see from these pictures, our race against time was to try to do something before the rain started washing this stuff into the river and moving stuff into the sediment for longer-term impacts. And so, you know, we're seeing, as we saw before, metals, nutrients. We see bacteria, sediment, organic matter that are coming off basically as a result of the fire. And our, our, our really the threat that we're trying to, to meet was really mostly associated with the homes at first. And then we're triaging into other responses that we'll talk about as we move through. Next slide, please. So the immediate response that we had was within one week after the board approved the million dollars for us to, to do the emergency response, was really a, a tribute to the partnerships that we had built for years around the Pure Water Partners Program, our Mackenzie Watershed Emergency Response System and our drinking water quality, our, our water quality monitoring that we're doing. And so with those partnerships in place, we're able to pivot quickly and go from doing riparian assessments to burn assessments and from designing erosion, riparian restoration to erosion control. So within that first week after the board approved the money, we're able to put in place a web portal for landlords to sign up. We had GIS tools developed so the field staff that are doing the surveys could actually design BMPs. We worked with City of Eugene to get arborists upriver to help us with hazard trees. And we worked with City of Eugene Erosion Control Experts to design and research the best erosion control we could find and then put it into essentially these BMPs. Like you see example on the right. The second page of this BMP is actually the design of how you implement this. And those were then used to train the North West Youth Corps crews to help us implement this on a bigger scale. And within that first week, we were able to stabilize 33 destroyed homes that were right along the river. So that initial input of funding allowed us to hit the ground quickly because we knew that state agencies and EPA, we're not going to be in our watershed until probably December. And, and they're even just now starting the second phase of work. Next slide, please. So as we expected, you know, one of the big things from the fire that we expected to see was increased turbidity and increased organic carbon. And we were not essentially, we were not surprised to see that hit us. One thing that was surprising, as you see in this chart, so the blue line is the discharge at VITA and the red is turbidity measured in FNU, is that we didn't have any storms really of significance until that mid-November storm. And so thankfully, this fall was, gave us a time to respond and get as much on the ground as far as erosion control as we could. But what we saw was, you know, that turbidity event in November was essentially the same level of turbidity we got back was essentially the same level of turbidity we got back in April 2019 flood. And even though the flood had twice the discharge and the flow. And so clearly, that first storm mobilized a lot of ash and debris and sediment that then... And then, as you look at subsequent storms, actually that were bigger in size, we see a subsequent decrease in turbidity for each storm that hit us. Now, we can try to claim credit for that, but I don't think we can totally claim credit for that. Obviously, a lot of material was washed off the surface during that November storm. But I do think a lot of work went on the ground that helped us reduce the impacts moving forward. Next slide, please. So as we kind of move from that initial response, that emergency response mode, we're now repositioned ourselves and reorganized ourselves kind of for the longer haul. And so this is our, essentially, the way we're working as part of the Watershed Recovery Task Force, as part of the Lane County Emergency Operations. So you see, we have six teams functioning well together. And I guess the takeaway message here is a couple of things. One is it takes a village. Not only do we have people like Janine Parisi really leaning in with the, not only strategic thinking and looking ahead and agency liaison, we have Jen doing a wonderful job with communications. Then you have Nancy Toth running the landowner program and helping develop incentives. And David Donahue with, of course, his water quality expertise. But even, you know, we have the Watershed Council, Jared Wabright, and Lane Council Governments. And we have McKenzie River Trust and the Upper Lamis Soil and Water Conservation District. So we have so many people involved in these teams that it is truly a more people than that I could thank than I can right here. But just the demonstration of this, just to show that, you know, we have a team that is really ready and posed to put things on the ground at scale and to ramp up quickly as we move into the next phase of work. Next slide, please. So what we're asking for you, from you tonight, is to look at, you know, what we're looking, what we're going to need in 2021 to continue this work and set us up for essentially a five years of response and recovery and restoration that makes a difference. And so we kind of put these into three essentially buckets of investment. That risk base, that really gets at these early actions to reduce the high priority impacts. The resiliency, which we know from the fire, we're going to have more flooding coming down over time. And so these are really to help us bounce back from events and really reduce impacts of those events. And then strategic, where we start to look at expanding conservation across larger acreage and industrial timberlands areas and other areas. And so for 2021, we're asking for about 3.5 million because half a million is carrying over from the initial $1 million investment. And then we'll bring this back to you in the March budget amendment. But really, the funding is going for continuing the risk-based work, which is so important to get on the ground quickly, the revegetation that we're starting right now, as well as building incentives for homeowners to move their buildings back or their homes back further from the river, increase or improve their septic systems, as well as maintaining our early warning network and the monitoring we're doing in the GIS work. The resiliency work in 2021 will really be focused on acquisitions of floodway properties with destroyed homes where willing landowners really don't want to face the risk of rebuilding anymore in those high-risk areas. And so being able to acquire those and restore them back into a functioning floodplain. And then, of course, the strategic is really just a small slice of the investment this year, and that's to really to help us develop the program, to start expanding on the opportunities that are going to be coming up in our partnership with the industrial timberlands and others. Next slide, please. So that's, you know, as we move from revegetation and that work, the longer view of things is over this five-year horizon. And really, as we look at that work, it aligns well with the original 10-year strategic plan that we developed for the board in 2018. And really, it does because the ways it does is that it's focused on riparian and floodplain restoration and protection. And even in that report, we talk about carbon sequestration as a watershed essentially stewardship and restoration plan or program that might be possible. And so our whole program is developed around stewardship and partnerships and leveraging our money with a lot of other money. So overall, during those five years, we're looking at, you know, the little over $29 million ask. And basically, what this amounts to, when you look at the surcharge, and Deborah Hartz Group is really the ones that are working on this, and we'll bring it back to you. But on average, this is about $3 per meter. And clearly, there's going to be some need to scale this up for larger customers, and that work is being done, as I said, by Deborah's group, and she will bring that back. But that's about what you're looking at on average. And then looking at bonds to really pay for the strategic projects, where we're essentially setting up the watershed for a longer-term restoration that will benefit future generations. And I guess, in this place, it's really important to also look at that the investments that E-Web is making allow us to leverage a lot of other money. It allows us to really do two things. It gives us a backstop, knowing we can do this work with this investment, and we can plan on it. And then, at the same time, as we bring in other money, we can scale back either E-Web funds or we can scale up the work we're doing. Next slide, please. So the kind of the way the money flows out in these three investment areas of risk-based, resiliency, and strategic are shown on this slide. And basically, the risk base being those early actions in the early part of our five-year projection. Once again, they're the ones that you've seen on the ground, you know, we're building up to do. The new ones, obviously, are the homeowner incentives, and we're starting to revegetation work. It's the resiliency and the strategic investments that are the areas that we're leaning into right now. And so the resiliency being the first and foremost, where we're looking at large-scale floodplain restoration projects. And I'll show you an example of that in a second. And really, that is to try to mitigate what's coming off the landscape and create a buffer between those burned landscapes and the river. And then the large-scale reforestation of severe burned areas on industrial timberlands is an opportunity for us to invest in the opportunities to increase the watershed essentially conservation benefits of that, that could also lead to carbon offsets. And so over the five years, you see how the funding kind of flows out into these three strategic areas. Next slide, please. So, of course, examples are risk-based. A lot of you that were on the tour saw this in action. In addition to what we're doing right now, and the BMPs, erosion control, is the revegetation work, and then land or homeowner incentives that we're developing right now, and zero interest loans that will help with moving structures back from the river and increasing septic treatment. But this group also includes our stormwater monitoring efforts, our early warning network, our GIS analysis that helps tell us where to work. And so these are all the risk-based actions to really get at the high priority actions we need to do along the river. Next slide, please. So the resiliency actions are really focused on those floodplain areas that are downstream of severe burned areas. And so this is a map of soil burn severity. And you can see the fire moving from east to west, essentially torching the east sides of the ridges and not so much on the west side. And so we've been working in these three areas of Gate Creek, Quartz Creek, and Fenrock for a while. And so these are the areas that basically, for example, Fenrock, which McKenzie River Trust owns, investing in the continued floodplain restoration of that portion of the McKenzie River, that allows kind of spreading out the flood flows and dropping out sediment, which is just downstream of the town of Blue River. You can see those red dots are destroyed homes. And so when you look at the Quartz Creek and Gate Creek areas that we look at investing in, those are downstream of timberlands that have been severely burned. And so what this allows us to do is basically drop out all that sediment, metals, nutrients, carbon, attenuate that, and reduce flood flows. And so the picture you see there below is example of the South Fork floodplain restoration that was done with the Forest Service and the McKenzie Watershed Council. And so this is an example of how you take an incised channel and you spread it out and put it in large wood, and it becomes, it's a natural floodplain again, where it slows the flow, reduces velocities, drops out sediment, and attenuates floods. And so this is a tried and true strategy that we've used on the South Fork and Deer Creek. And it's basically investing in these three areas using FEMA money to basically do the implementation. And our funds go into essentially conservation easements and acquisitions and design and so forth. So that's an example of what resiliency action would look like. Next slide, please. So the strategic actions is one that is really obviously very scalable. This is one where we are essentially focused on expanding watershed conservation and control across a larger landscape. And that leads to carbon sequestration product line. It leads to essentially potentially generating carbon offsets. And so this is built on a U of O E-Web partnership, long-term partnership, where we're using the High Banks Road as a carbon research center, which will then inform the design of these carbon projects as the opportunities present themselves. And so this would be looked at as a bond-funded strategic action. And like we said, it's scalable based on the opportunities in front of us and the desire of the board wants to go in this direction. And I think that is it for me. I'll turn it back to Karen. Next slide, please.
So to close out, over more than a decade of outreach and research, customers have expressed a clear and unchanging priority. Ensuring safe, reliable drinking water remains the most important E-Web program. We want to undertake this work with the support and guidance of our board of commissioners who represent our customer owners. So first, we're asking you for direction in the proposed 3.9 million 2021 budget amendment to ultimately gain approval in March. And secondly, we're asking for your direction to reach a common understanding of the investments that the board would like to make in watershed restoration over the next five years to lead us to reach an eventual approval in May or June. This must include a long-term financial plan funding approach, such as the surcharge and bond funding for up to 29 million, as mentioned. So at this point, Carl and I are happy to take your questions, and we'll open it up.
Great. All right. Is there anybody, any of the commissioners want to go first? You can raise your hand if I can see you. I don't see any hands raised, but I'm... Oh, okay, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a handful of questions, and forgive me to kind of bounce around a little bit. Thank you for the presentation, Carl. It's very helpful. In terms of the surcharge, you mentioned the average of $3 per meter. I assume that's $3 per meter per year. Is that right? And then the second part of that, sorry, is are there any large customers, industrial customers, et cetera, who will see a really significant surcharge that we might hear about?
I'm going to let Deborah answer that. Deborah, are you here?
Thanks, Carl. I am here. Sorry about that. That would be an average per month charge is actually what he's referencing. And how that charge gets applied is something that we're working on now to bring you all a reasonable proposal next month. So it may be smaller for residential and, yes, larger for some of our large commercial water users.
I guess I would just jump in and add, you know, part of the thing we're going to wrestle with there, Matt, is how we do this equitably. You know, is it a fixed charge versus volumetric? You know, do you charge the same? To some extent, every gallon of water is affected by the watershed. But then you also know that there are some commercial customers who rely on it more than others. So we're going to have to struggle through the equity piece of that before we come back to the board. But we wanted to provide you with at least an average for kind of a residential picture of about $3 a month. How that's structured, we don't know yet.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Do we have a sense of, currently, bond rates are really low. Is there a, do you have a sense of how much of this could be bonded of the whole package of what we're talking about? I just don't have a sense of what of this proposed, these proposed actions could actually be paid for with a bond.
Do you want me to take that, Carl? Much of the, so much of the up to $17 million in strategic work that Carl alluded to is something that we would look at for bond funding.
Great, thanks. Yeah, Matt, it sounds like you're wondering if more of that could be bonded. And I guess we are exploring some, you know, what's called green bonds. But I think, I think we're leaning on the carbon being the bond-funded.
Typically, typically, when we look to bond fund, those bondholders are looking for us to be acquiring or building some sort of an asset. So most of the initial 12, the 12 million piece is more O and M work.
Okay, yeah, and, sorry, I'm just going on with questions. Is this okay, Mindy? You can stop me. I can come back another round.
Yeah, I don't have the timer anymore, but go ahead.
Okay, I'll just take one more, and then I'll let somebody else jump in here. Yes, the opportunity to bond, Carl, seems like a big opportunity. Are you assume we're talking about, when we're talking about industrial forest lands? Are we talking about, you said reforesteding those lands? Are we also talking about just outright purchase of those lands? Is that something that's part of the discussion?
Yeah, basically, the reforestation is basically, because one of the issues we have is a lack of seedlings supply that's going to hit us over the next three, four years. And so it's being able to, either through acquisition or conservation easement, gain control of large tracts that we could then reforest and turn into conservation zones.
Okay, thanks. And I'll just stop by saying, I think because this is a long-term investment in water quality and watershed protection, it makes sense. It's one of the places where it does make sense to me to take out loans to do the work. And I think the money that E-Web puts forward can be leveraged in so many ways. I'm familiar with the ways in which that's being done already. And I think it's a smart use of those dollars. That's all. Thanks.
All right, John Brown.
Thank you. I could be, anyhow, I was going to say we spend too much money on water preservation, but I think you'd see through that. You know, I'm totally in support of everything, as you could probably imagine. But just a couple of specific questions, maybe for Deborah. We're looking at AWS, alternative water supply, you know, $50 to $70 million in the next few years. It's teed up in our hierarchy of spending, and that's out of the water budget, too. Are we going to be able to make our debt coverage ratio requirements for bonding for both those, these unexpected bonds and those potentially anticipated bonds? I mean, what, how much can we afford?
So you actually do raise a really good, a really good point about our ability to borrow. And part of limiting that borrowing is to preserve capacity for an alternative water source. So last year, in the fall, we brought another long-term financial plan with an additional $50 million in it to demonstrate the kind of capacity that the water utility had. The capacity is there, but it is something that we're watching.
Okay, and then maybe something for Carl, or whoever else would like to further down. I'm all for acquiring some of these at-risk properties. And if nothing else, you know, acquire it and throw a deed restriction on it, or, you know, just, and then sell it to the adjacent owner, you know, and say they can keep it for open space, but they can't improve it. And that way, we don't have to tie up all that capital. There's some creative ways I think you can do to acquire a lot of this real estate and do that without having to totally own it and fee ownership. We could, you know, people want open space. They don't want neighbors. So you acquire five acres on the river, and the neighbors say, well, I'll give you, you know, $100,000 for it, and we can at least recover some of that money and achieve our goal, hopefully, and put conservation easements on it. And lastly, the thing that's been bugging me a long time about our water quality, and you know, my favorite, down in Springfield, if you look at page 21 on your background or on the aerial, you'll see the IP pulp effluent pond that has millions of gallons of pulp effluent in it right next to I-105, right next to the 42nd Street slough. Are we ever going to worry about that or be concerned about that? Because that's an earth and berm, and if we have an earthquake, millions of gallons of that effluent are going to go right into the river, right above our intake. Is that anything that's on your radar while we're doing this?
It is on our radar, but in what we were moving towards before the fire hit us was a couple of things. One is, you know, creating more wetlands in those areas. But then the other is having an early warning station set up right there. But then the other is having an early warning station set up right there. We diverted that early warning station to upriver to be part of the fire. They are mobile, so once we get our feet under us, we'll bring it back. I do find that interesting. It would be interesting to engage IP and just, you know, look at what is their their long term plan for that that area.
Okay, thank you. I just, it's just a concern. I don't think it, if you look at an aerial of what what our risks are, and you know, the closer to the plant, the greater the risk, and we've got millions of gallons effluent. The one on the on the west side of 42nd doesn't concern me. It's the one next to I 105 that's right there, and it's just adjacent to the slough. And you can take a shovel and knock the berm down. And, you know, it that's going to be a concern to me. So while we're while we're fixing things, I hope we can at least keep that in the background. Thank you. And I support 100% funding of everything. Thank you and more.
Thank you.
Sonia, do you have any questions?
I have a couple. I'm sorry if I missed it, but I didn't hear address the question kind of from earlier on whether or not we really have any input on the logging in these areas. I mean, it seems like in the area that we own, that is something. But as you're developing these partnerships, is that something that we are working with those kinds of groups to promote or or maybe the opposite to, you know, prevent? Or is that something that's really left up to the the landowners?
I mean, we have, we have limited influence on how people manage their private lands as long as they're managing them per the Forest Practices Act. We do try to have influence on either mostly at the smaller landowners, not the industrial timber owners. And so what we are doing now is engaging them on opportunities to how can we, how can we take control of floodplains and let us manage those? How can we take more control over key riparian areas? And how can we help essentially restore these areas in a way that that gives us more resilience? But as far as dictating or trying to influence how they are logging and why they're logging, it's really, it's really hard. We have been on tours with Campbell Global and others up there. And basically, what their race is is against infestation of beetles and then losing the value if they don't get that wood out of there in a short period of time. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't, you know, I don't know. But they are, in their minds, racing against the clock to try and get the value that they can out of the lands that they own. And that's, you know, ODF regulates that. We can certainly work with the legislature or others if we want to take that route. But the short answer is we don't have a lot of influence.
Okay, so it seems like for the, you know, some messaging for the people who are interested in that, it it sounds like ODFW is really more of the regulating body for that, that, you know, oversight and how that works. So if they're really concerned about that, they they need to take it up with ODFW.
Yes, and the way that we are going to influence is through our investments in the resiliency and the strategic areas, we will have an influence there.
And we're not proactively, you know, trying to help landowner log. I mean, that's not one of the partnerships we're developing. We're developing partnerships to preserve the the watershed and for preservation of the watershed. Now, is the the assumption then correct that they were making tonight that it is, it is actually more damaging to to clear that out than to leave some of that wood there? Have you seen some of the evidence or the science in the the studies that you've done in preserving?
It's it's a complex issue. I personally, you know, whether what we're seeing, the sediment is coming from a severe burned area or a severe burned area that's logged, it's really hard to differentiate that. I do agree that leaving trees is a better move until they fall over and they take a root wad with them. But, you know, it's, I don't, yeah, I, we have not seen that data that shows that this area that got severely burned is pumping out less sediment than this area that they just logged.
Okay. All right. And then in terms of the the direction for the board tonight, what we need to give you, do you need all like one, two, and three? Or could we do a layered approach where we, you know, we we kind of take step one and say, yes, we give, you know, if we decide to give approval to that, we can do that. And then we can look on the five year and then, you know, maybe at a later time, we kind of say, okay, now we're at a place where we do the long term? Or how do those three intermingle for like, you know, the next month? What, what, how, do you need that right now, or could we kind of take this piecemeal?
Well, the the plan is that the 2021 budget amendment is what really needs to be ironed down and, you know, we'll bring back to you in March. And if you see some concerns about what we're looking at in the 2021 budget amendment, that'd be good to hear so we can make those adjustments. The five year plan, we'll have time to talk about, and we'll have more information come May and April as we get better understanding of what FEMA is going to reimburse us for, what FEMA is looking to potentially invest in that we can leverage. So those questions are all still being worked out, which is why we're going to look at bringing that part of it back to you a little bit later.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm I'm comfortable with going with number one. I feel like, you know, two and three need to be fleshed out a little bit more before I'm looking at, you know, just giving full approval tonight. I'm more than happy to give, you know, my blessing to say, yes, you know, go and and actually do the work to bring that information back. Sorry, maybe Frank had a.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to elaborate a little bit. Commissioner Carlson, I think that the highest priority for us is the budget amendment for 2021. A secondary and maybe a coupling piece to that is the ability to start some kind of a surcharge approach and looking and recognizing that we need to have some funding established, and now is the time to do it. I'll say that the sooner the the better for that. And and being able to establish that mechanism, knowing that I, and I want to make sure the board's clear on this as well as the public, this is a five year, three to five year proposed approach. This is not an ongoing, we're going to keep this in the rates forever, that surcharge. So establishing that mechanism in combination with the 2021 budget amendment, those are the twoest high priorities. We will be back in in June regardless with the long term financial plan and the impacts going forward with these assumptions in place because we think they're generally supported by the board and you have a number of questions as to the impact. But those are the two priorities.
Okay, perfect. I'll move to approve the 21, the amendment, $3.9 million proposed budget amendment.
Yeah, I think we're actually just at, we'll bring, we'll bring that actual amendment back as a resolution next month, but we appreciate your enthusiasm.
Well, it says approval, you know. All right, so that's not really what we're doing tonight, so I wanted to be clear on it.
We want you to approve it.
I'm done.
All right, John Borowski, you have not had a chance yet. And then I see your hand, John Brown.
Thank you. I've got a question and then a couple of comments. So for Deborah, so the the $3 surcharge, could that be used to help? That'll raise $12 million. If that goes for longer than five years, could that help to defray the the bond cost and use that to to go for the bond cost? Because I don't know if I'm, I'm set with leaving that just at five, five years. I think that that's something that could be an ongoing thing to help offset the bonds and continue this work for in perpetu- in perpetuity. But that's the question.
That that's certainly a choice that this board could make. They could, they could plan that from the outset, or they could make that as we approach the three to five year mark.
Okay, then my two comments are, I agree, agree with Frank. Now is the time to strike, strike while, I hate to say this, but strike while the iron is hot. The community interest is in restoring the the Mackenzie Valley and the watershed. And so I think that bringing this to the public or bringing this to our ratepayers is absolutely appropriate at this time. With that said, I would even say, let's look at maybe even going higher, $3.50, whatever we we feel we can get, I think is appropriate. The second comment that I would make is, as far as the large, the larger commercial ratepayers, the business community has been hit hard over the last year or two. So I would hope that we can come up with some sort of metrics that is is fair, but maybe not based on volume, you know? Look at what our needs are, figure out how many meters there are, and then do it appropriately so that it's, it's not hurting our business community to the extent, you know, we're, a lot of businesses are down already. And so I know that they'd be on board, but on board, volume wise, may be difficult for some businesses. So I would want that to be considered in in what we're doing as far as the commercial side.
All right, I just have a couple of comments. One is that I fully support this. I think that is money well spent, not just money, but I also think that it is our responsibility to take care of the watershed. And I'm super proud just by association. I think, Carl, the work you and your team are doing is phenomenal and will probably serve as a model for many other communities because we know that fires are just going to become more common. So kudos to you and your team for being able to do this. It's really great. I guess I just have one question. And in that three to five year plan, is there other ways to, I know it's focused on restoration, obviously, but are there ways to kind of shore up resiliency for when, if and when the next fire hits? Or is it just a fire event is a fire event, and we can't really plan for it?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And so the the direction we're moving is more for a, a fire, well, just for the communities, the the folks that are rebuilding is, is, is really do it with a firewise approach. And then for the actually, you know, the the floodplain projects, those in and of themselves are, allow large wetted surfaces to act as firebreaks, so to speak. And then working upstream of that really is a a attention to fuels and planning the right species in the right places that helps you with that fire resistance. So yes, the short answer is, we are, all three of these are looking at it from a fire standpoint and a flood standpoint and a natural disaster standpoint.
Great. And then one last question, and it's about the ODFW and the the issues about timber that the public input we heard today. So we get in our packet, we hear about like what E web's legislative efforts are. And I'm just curious, has it ever been one of our efforts to kind of lobby the state or even at the federal level to address the issue of large scale clear cutting? Or is that something that's just too big for us and we don't want to get involved in?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, when you look at our strategic plan and what we've done, we've shown that forestry is actually not our highest priority threat. That urban runoff is, development is, you know, spills to lesser degree agriculture. But and so forestry didn't warrant our full attention, to be honest. But, you know, post fire, you know, maybe there's opportunities there. I know there is, the conservation group is working with the timber industry and ODF to revisit the Forest Practices Act. So I think we should track that work and see, is there something there that we that we should lean into?
Yeah, Frank.
Yeah, I was, sorry, my, my computer had a glitch there, so I had to leave and come back. But I was, I was going to say, I've also had some discussions with Jason Huzer about the, this, he refers to it as the stack of bills that are presently going through Salem and understanding and keeping tabs on what's going on relative to anything related to wildfire or watershed or recovery or logging. And so he's, he's looking into that aspect of it. I didn't get a chance to comment completely on the, on the rate discussion. I was going to say that we can, I'll, I'll talk to Deborah about a number of different options. When I start to hear about multiple purposes, not just recovery, but protection, Commissioner Borowski's comment about almost in perpetuity, those become rate discussions as opposed to surcharge discussions. And we might be looking at a couple of different options there. We do have some headroom relative to other utilities. I think we just want to make sure that we, we, if there's a dedicated fund for a dedicated purpose, we can definitely, that is very easy for the community to understand, especially right now. And so a surcharge would make sense for that. But if the board is looking to just beef up the amount of watershed work that we do, that could be a combination of surcharge and rate action. So I just want to let you know that there's different ways to approach this and and I'll get with Karen and Rod and Deborah and figure out what's the best mix for what we'd like to do.
John Brown, you had had your hand up again. Do you?
Yeah, I just, if I may, just a real quick comment to, you know, Carl and I go way back on some of these topics. And I just want to make sure that because of budget limitations or perception of budget limitations, that we don't go out and pass up an opportunity. This is, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, the the loss that everybody suffered up there, but it could be an opportunity for us, and I don't want to lose that opportunity. If there's some critical properties that are, that there's question of whether they're going to be redeveloped or we could acquire and throw a conservation easement on or whatever, I would hope that rather than pass on those opportunities, that you would at least come to us and say, hey, here it is. It's kind of like the Finn Rock property when we had that opportunity. I just, I just, because this is, you know, once they're built on, you just told us what the priorities were, and it's, it's, you know, it's urban runoff and it's development. And it's, and timber is way down there. And if we can say, okay, we can take, you know, 10 or 20 septic tanks, but stay away from that river and make everybody whole, I'm all for that. And I don't want to lose that opportunity because once they're rebuilt, they're there for 50 to 100 years. And and it's, it's not one, it's death by a thousand cuts is what will hurt that river. So I don't want to lose those opportunities to maybe help people financially and also help the community in the watershed.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. I think this does give us the ability to take advantage of these opportunities because it's not just our money, like I've been talking about. We're leveraging millions of other dollars with this money. So yes.
Thank you.
Matt?
Thanks. I just have two questions to propose for when you come back to us next time on this topic. If we have any community attitudes surveys that would help inform our decision, that would be really helpful. They may not be, you know, specifically this question, because I don't think we can spool up a survey in time to ask that, maybe. But if there are surveys that could give us some sense of how our E web customers might respond to a surcharge, that would be helpful to know. And then I know, Carl, that you aren't going to have a sense of how much this can be reimbursed because the machine just doesn't move fast enough to know, you know, whether FEMA dollars are going to cover this or cover that. However, it'd be useful to know, in the best case scenario, how much of it you think could be reimbursed, just so we have a sense, are we, you know, might half of what we're talking about spending be be reimbursed or a quarter of it, just to give us a sense of scale would be useful? Thank you.
Yeah, I think the short answer is that of our initial response, you know, we're looking at probably half a million to 700,000 being reimbursed of that million that we spent. But moving forward, basically what we're doing is we're, we're covering like for the floodplain efforts, you know, that's mostly FEMA money, and then we're paying that 25% match is kind of our contribution as well as doing the design and other things. So it's not really reimbursement, but it's adding more to ours to allow us to scale up. And then, I mean, right now, we're in the process of about half a million dollars worth of grants and other things, requests that are out there. So you're right, it is hard to, to put a figure on that right now because there's so many moving parts, as you're aware of. But I think by May or April, when we come back to that longer term vision, I think we'll have a lot. I think we'll have a lot of that dialed in and be able to, to help you understand that a bit more.
And I would add, Mr. McCray, that we do have access to some data that shows our customer affinity to increasing investment in, in the watershed. And it had to do with watershed protection and not specific to fire recovery, which I think would even be a higher affinity to do that. So we can supply that as well.
Yeah, that'd be great to see, thanks so much.
John Borowski, do you have any other comments? Sonia, I'm not sure if you're there, you have anything else?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Great, all right, well, thank you very much, Carl and Karen. Hopefully you got the information you needed.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, all right. Then we will move on to agenda item number 10, correspondence and board agendas. Frank, that's you.
Yes, it is, President Schlossberg, thank you. You know, first of all, you know, thanks to Karen and Carl and the whole team there. They've, they've, you know, we've, we've had a tremendous influence in the watershed through the years and developing partnerships. And, and part of this is to get to the question that Sonia answered, asked earlier about, you know, can we, can we influence some of these? I think some of the purpose of our strategic investment is to move along the continuum from just influencing to actually controlling some of this through easements or acquisitions. So I think there's a good opportunity there. There are only two items of correspondence. One had to do with updating some board policies. These are relative to references that, to statute or code primarily, fairly minor. We typically ask for any input that you might have. That can be either offline or through this meeting and, and then would bring back likely. These were pretty minor, so as a consent item. And then the other one was a legislative update. It's, it's early in the season, as Jason would describe it, and a whole stack of bills, probably more than we would have expected in this kind of environment. And we're starting to wade through some of those and, and I think he provided an update. And so if there were any question on those two items, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we can move on to the, the agenda planning. I don't see any questions. From an agenda perspective, I know the board is getting together. I think that's a great move. We do have a second meeting planned for this month. This is, this is mostly to give you an update on our customer experience improvement project. This is customer self-service. We'll give you a demo just to get your feedback on that. That's a, going to be a new product for how customers pay bills and things like that. So that's, that's an orientation. And then I was waiting a little bit to see the outcome of tonight and see if we, we got to a stage I felt comfortable with on, especially on Lieberg. I think we did, we can move forward with what we got. But I might also suggest as part of the meeting in February, I'd, I'd like to go through where we are with the strategic plan now, kind of give at least a little bit of history as to where this came from. And now, there's a couple of commissioners who went through the process, so that it, but I think there's enough new people on the board to just give you a feel for how the plan was developed and, and why it prioritizes the things it does and doesn't do other things. So a little bit of a, a strategy history and then discussion and kind of Q and A around that so that we can set up future strategic discussions on where we want to go from here and maybe why. So that, that would be probably an hour to an hour and a half meeting on the third Tuesday. And so that, if that works for everybody, we can start scheduling that. We've tried to reserve those dates. We won't do it every month, but felt like this was kind of a good time to do it since we got a lot covered today and we've got some, some new board members who are now in the fray of it. January was kind of a, hey, welcome to the, to the club. And now it's, oh, you got to work for this. So a lot of things starting to, to happen.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to number 11, board wrap-up. John Brown, do you want to go first?
Well, thank you, and I apologize for joining everybody late, but it was a technical glitch and I'm technologically challenged. And so it's, it's got to be my fault, I'm sure. That said, I just want to remind people that I know that several of you have not seen things like Seneca. And, and I personally would like to see the new biomass generating facility in Junction City. It's huge, and so I think one of the biggest ones in the West, and not a lot of people know about it. But those are the things that I know that it's, you can social distance and you can stay away from people. But there, I think it's really, especially Seneca to see because I think that relicensing, that license is going to come up in the tenure of a couple of the board members. Is that not correct, Frank?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a power purchase agreement that expires, I believe, in 2025. And so, so yeah, and it's got some interesting characteristics. I think that would be good, as well as the other tour that you mentioned in Junction City, which is primarily right now used for renewable natural gas injection as opposed to generating electricity. So that would be a good one as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And then just as a, as an update, I think Frank gave you, but I think the, the transaction on Bertelson is going well. So kudos to staff for making that happen real quickly. So thank you, that's it.
Great, I'm just going to go clockwise on my screen. And Matt, you are next.
I'll just say, thanks for queuing up the softballs today, Frank, that was great. That's all, I'm thrilled to be here and thrilled to be here and working with this board. It's, it's a privilege.
All right, Sonia, you're next.
I don't have anything to add, I'm great meeting tonight, thanks Erin.
John Borowski.
Yeah, thank you. The learning continues. Each one of these packets is, is eye-opening and I look forward to learning more as the months go on.
And just one quick thing for me, we have a board retreat coming up on February 21st. And believe me, I understand that the last thing any of us wants is any more time on Zoom or any of these virtual meetings, but I promise that we'll keep it short. My goal is to keep it maybe an hour, yeah, we'll say an hour. And I'm just thinking that it will be a time for us just to kind of get to know each other a little bit better and just strengthen that relationship. We're not allowed to talk anything policy or anything like that. So we'll keep it light and fun and I promise we'll keep it to an hour, so.
Maybe is that the 21st or the 22nd? I think 21st is a Sunday.
Oh, it's the 22nd, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send out more information about that in a bit. And otherwise, that is it, unless Frank, you have anything else that you want to say?
I just wanted to thank the board. I know we, we took like half a step down, a many-mile journey on some of these issues. And it's really valuable to have this interaction and get questions and understand where you're coming from. It's a, it's a great test for us and it, it helps staff a lot, so. But a lot more to come. Sometimes you, you answer one, you know, you ask or answer one question and it creates eight more. And, you know, that's the journey we're expecting over the next two or three years, which I expect to be pretty intense on some of these, most of these and other issues. So thanks for your input and patience and questions and look forward to the journey.
Great, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Mike McCann.
Yes, thanks, Mike.